Will everyone please take their seats? Plenty of seats up front. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November 27, 2007, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmembers Draymond.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Yusefian.
Here.
Mayor Najarian.
Here. Councilmember Draymond, would you please lead us in the flag salute?
Be happy to.
Please rise. Place your hand over your heart and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. The Glendale Character and Ethics Project's word for the month of November is citizenship, and it is the inspiration for tonight's invocation. By practicing citizenship, we encourage each other to accept the rights, privileges, and responsibilities of living in our community and country. President Andrew Jackson, the seventh president of these United States, once wrote that "Every good citizen makes his country's honor his own and cherishes it not only as precious but as sacred." Let us take this sacred oath of citizenship and make its tenets the blueprint of our lives. Let us dedicate ourselves to the values and principles upon which this country was founded and honor this code with which we have been blessed. Let us pray that our nation remains prosperous and healthy, and the laws that govern our communities and everyday lives always serve the best interests of our citizenry. We pray for guidance and strength to remain true to these words now and always. Amen.
May we have your report, please?
Certainly. The agenda for the November 27, 2007, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Wednesday, November 21, 2007, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And the next item?
Item number three, presentation and appointments at 3A is Agenda Preview for the meeting of December 4, 2007.
Sayon.
Mayor Najarian, council members, meeting for December 4, Housing Authority Meeting. There's no items on the agenda. For the Glendale Redevelopment Agency, item 6A is the Director of Development Services regarding the Alex Regional Theater Art Board Quarterly Report. For joint public meeting, Glendale City Council and Glendale Redevelopment Agency, Director of Public Works and Director of Development Services regarding San Fernando Road Landscaping Improvement Project Phase III. Council meeting for December 4. Agenda under presentation, we have Councilmember Quintero nominate member to Board of Zoning Appeal, Councilmember Draymond to nominate member to Design Review Board, number one. Action items, Director of Development Services regarding Montrose Shopping Park and Adams Square Merchants Associations, Budget for Calendar Year 2008, Director of Development Services regarding consideration of resolution of intention to levy and collect assessment in the Adams Square Business Improvement District for Budget 2008. And we also have a hearing interim Director of Glendale Water and Power regarding water rate increase. And we also have a Director of Planning regarding proposed ordinance amending Title V, 16, and 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code relating to miscellaneous revision. And that concludes the agenda for December 4.
Thank you. The next item, please?
At 3B is a presentation by the Commission on the Status of Women, Rosie Goes to Wall Street.
And will the commissioners please come forward?
Commissioners and friends.
Commissioners and friends, yes.
My name is Paula Devine, Mayor Najarian, City Council, and staff. It's my pleasure as Vice Chair of the Commission on the Status of Women to present to you, the audience here and at home, this four-minute DVD on a very important accomplishment of the Commission on the Status of Women. It is our Rosie Goes to Wall Street program. Here with me tonight are Lana Hadad, our management staff, Kathy Piameti, she was the director of the school, Melina, I'm sorry, Sardar, she was an instructor, and our Chair, the Commission on the Status of Women, Carla Curlin. Rosie consisted of two, three-week sessions for high school girls, a camp, teaching them life skills, financial literacy, safe dating, self-defense, nutrition, fitness, and a lot of other subjects. Thanks to Seroptimist International of Glendale and the L.A. Women's Foundation, this was a fully funded program through grants. Tonight, we will see a glimpse of the final product. We had hoped that some of the graduates would be here, but they are doing exactly what they learned at Rosie. They are volunteering at the Ark Family Center tonight, so they were unable to be here. You have all been provided with a 14-minute DVD, I hope, of the complete Rosie Goes to Wall Street version, and I hope that you all get a chance to see. And if you don't have it, it will come to you. So now, we'll look at the four-minute tease.
To me, the Rosie Goes to Wall Street program is so important because it gives girls tools to use in their future. It helps them to have a well-rounded kind of sense of themselves. It's not only about the educational part of it, but the interaction with the other students, with the different presenters. In a camp of 30 girls with the absence of boys, they are able to really focus on themselves and on one another, so that, to me, is extremely valuable. When you're new to this country, and some of our girls have been here six months, and the city of Glendale embraces you and gives you a program where you can learn about money, nutrition, how to get a job, how to protect yourself, how to say no to someone who wants to violate you. That is a huge welcome.
The most important thing that it took away from the Rosie program was the confidence to communicate to others. The most important thing I took away from the program was that I've gained a lot of friendships, and I've learned a lot about myself as a person.
I loved everything about the Rosie Goes to Camp. It was a wonderful experience. I loved the self-defense. The people were wonderful. I met a lot of new, different people. I had a fun time.
This was one of the most amazing experiences, and I just, I have my fingers crossed that we can really do this again for these girls because it was just amazing. Not only for them, not only did they learn, but I learned the importance of collaboration. I learned the importance of working together as a community to really make impact, true impact, and make a difference in people's lives.
Participating in Rosie's camp is amazing to me because I think it's critical that they learn as they start dating.
The thing that I would share with others, future girls, is to really listen to what the people have to tell you because it's very important.
Because they received all that, they were, they're able to give back, and they want to give back.
I've learned that I could be a role model to other girls that were younger than me because I was one of the more older girls in the group, so I've kind of touched on a lot of the girls, and they've become one of my small sisters or friends, as we can say.
I really enjoyed the Rosie Camp program, and I wish I could do it again. And I really loved learning with all the adults who were really helpful, and hopefully they come and do it every year until I become an adult. Maybe I can sponsor them and have fun.
I think, all around, it's a good, complete empowerment program for the girls, and I think it worked really well.
One person or a group of people can have a vision, but it really takes so many different people to come together and join that vision and to make that happen. And that's really what happened with Rosie Goes to Wall Street.
The first session, we had 28 enrollees. By the second day, after they had experienced the first few classes with Melina, where the phone was ringing off the hook, we had girls that wanted to be enrolled but could not be. Needless to say, the second session was full to capacity, and we probably could have taken in more girls, but of course, we didn't have the room. Second thing I wanted to say is, as a retired secondary school teacher, I saw the transformation myself. The girls, the first day, and I don't know, you can even see in this film, as I was watching, I could see them walking in with the body language like this and just kind of looking around. And by the end of the session, you saw at the end, what, actually, after Melina got finished with them in an hour, they were talking to each other, laughing, making friends, and just really willing to take in everything that was offered in this workshop. So I'm sure that we're all so proud of this program, and I'm hoping, we're all hoping, that when the next budget session cycle comes along, that you will remember Rosie and help out the commission. We're so thankful for your support so far, and we hope to see more of it in the future. Questions for anyone?
I know we got a lot of help from Congressman Schiff, who put forth some, obtained us some funds, did he not? I remember lobbying for Rosie Goes to Wall Street in Washington, and I'm not sure whose office carried our requests, but...
I know it placed really highly in the federal appropriations process, but we actually never received funds this year for it. Hopefully, we will in the future.
Okay, well, now we have a video to use in our lobbying efforts.
Yes, and we're hoping that this will kind of encourage more members of the community and foundations in the community and grant possibilities from this community because these are our kids, these are our girls.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your efforts. Thank you. The next item, Ernie?
At 3C is a presentation by the Seroptimist of the Verdugos of Trauma Teddies to the Glendale Police Department.
My name is Kate Bernera, and I'm president of the Seroptimist International of the Verdugos, and with me tonight are some of our club members. And Seroptimist International is, I'm sure you know, is a worldwide organization for professional women that strive to help to improve the lives of women and girls. Together, we share our time, our talents, and our financial resources to serve as a global voice for women in our local communities as well as the world. There are over 90,000 members in over 125 countries. Thank you for the opportunity to make a public presentation of the trauma teddies to our police department. These teddies were collected at our installation dinner. Each of our members and guests purchased a brand-new teddy bear to be given to children in our community that have faced trauma. We would like to make the presentation to Sergeant Tim Feeley, Supervisor of the Assaults and Crimes Against Persons, which handles all crimes against children. And Tim, Sergeant Feeley would like to talk about the trauma teddies.
Thank you. Mr. Starbird, Mayor Najarian, City Council, I'm honored to receive this gift from the Seroptimists. The children that we deal with are often the silent victims of crimes. Since I've been the supervisor for the assault detail we've handled, and it's been since 2005, we've had over, well over 1,000 child victims, and these are victims of specific crimes. And oftentimes, these are the ones that are silent. The city doesn't, the community doesn't always hear about them. Things like these teddy bears go a long way to help these children. When they come to our police station, they're scared, they're lonely, they're frightened. So when we're able to give them a gift like this or something that they can hold on to, it really changes their demeanor, and it really helps them through the process that we have to take them through. So this is a great honor. I appreciate the Seroptimists for thinking of the children, and I thank you for allowing us to do our jobs like we do.
Oh, that's a lot of teddies in that.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. The next item, please?
Next item is appointment, at 3D is appointment of Mr. Stephen Lee to the Arts and Culture Commission, and this nomination was made by Councilmember Weaver.
I do have a request to speak on this item, actually on items 3D, E, and F. Mr. Allen? Can you be heard on all three at once?
Truly, I can. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council staff, and of course, most importantly, the public. And Barry Allen, one of the things that I've asked on several occasions, and I just want to make sure that it is followed today, is the appointments that are being made, nominations being made, and the election to various commissions, I think that the public needs to know the value that each of these people brings to the different commission they're on, their experience, their interest in the community. And I think we need to hear that on these three people today as well as those in the future. Thank you. I'm Barry Allen.
Thank you. And that has started to be our practice, but let me go to Mr. Weaver.
Yes.
Your appointment, your nomination.
I'd like to nominate Stephen Lee to the Arts and Culture Commission. He works in Chubba Chase Canyon, a civil engineer, but he's gone far aside from being a civil engineer. He's Vice President of the Chinese Chamber of Commerce, Vice President of the Lotus Festival Advisory Board, and former president of Heritage Asia in the Pacific. He chaired the Miss L.A. Chinatown pageant, and a former Chair of the Chinese New Year Festival. He's been doing this kind of public involvement over 20 years. He also was on our Unity Cast Committee in Glendale this past year. I've known him for a number of years, and I think, and I checked with our Parks and Rec Head, Dorchapian, and he concurs that Stephen Lee would make a great addition to the commission, so I'd like to nominate him.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please?
Councilmember Draymond.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Yusefian.
Hi.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. The next item?
At 3E is appointment of Mr. Young Yu to Design Review Board Number One, and this was also made by council, this nomination was also made by Councilmember Weaver.
Mr. Weaver.
Yes, in both this and the other Design Review Board nomination, I consulted with Hassan Agani, who consulted with his staff. They did web searches on these two individuals. They concurred that these are two individuals that might do quite well. Young Yu lives in Glen Oaks Canyon, went to Cal Poly Mona as an architect, works for our firm in Los Angeles. He's the principal and partner of the firm. American Institute of Architects, he's a homeowner association member. He's worked on architectural projects of various sizes, from single-family residential to entire high school campuses. He's personally been through the City of Glendale Design Review Board, the Building Safety, Planning, Public Works Engineering, and is in the process of construction. So he has learned his own uses. In Glendale, he worked on Crescent Valley High School, the additions and the renovations there. He has a wide background in education, residential, and retail projects all across the United States and internationally. So he's got a very broad breadth of experience and should bring a new look to the Design Review Board Number One, so I'd like to nominate him.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please?
Councilmember Draymond.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Yusefian.
Hi.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Next item, 3A.
Next item, at 3F is appointment of Mr. Alex Zerfian to Design Review Board Number Two, and this nomination was also made by Councilmember Weaver.
This is the trifecta for you, Mr. Weaver.
Yes, I'm getting mine out of the way.
You certainly have been quite productive.
Well, it took more than 30 days. Mr. Zerfian got his bachelor's and master's from USC. That's almost right there. He's a senior project designer and associate vice president of Cannon Design, which is located in Avenue of the Stars. He's a senior project designer. He's a member, he's been a member of our CDBG Advisory Committee in 2005 and '06, member of the American Institute of Architects, and for us, the U.S. Green Building Council and the LED Accredited Professionals, which we talk about green in Glendale. He brings a nice aspect to this, to the board. He's also done a lot of student reviews of designs at USC and Library College a number of times. He wrote in here that he develops comprehensive design solutions that make the most of the site characteristics by respecting the surrounding community and context. For one project, he's been involved in the Santa Monica UCLA Medical Center Replacement Hospital as a project design architect, and he gave us two and a half pages of projects, residential and commercial, that he has been the architect on over 29 years, that he's been at least resident in Glendale. So again, another, I think, great addition to the city, and Mr. Donnie concurs on that. So I'd like to nominate him.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please?
I'm sorry, second was...
Mr. Quintero.
Councilmember Draymond.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Yusefian.
Hi.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Before we go to the next item, do any of my colleagues have any nominations that they'd like to put on next week's agenda? I would like to place on next week's agenda the nomination of Mr. Harmik Akarian to the Building and Fire Appeals Board. Next item, please?
Mr. Mayor, before you move on, Mr. Akarian being the only candidate having a resume in with the city, and as being the other council member at the moment that has an appointment to the, to make a nomination for appointment to the fire and safety, I would like to ask that we, once again, go out with that again, Mr. City Clerk, if that is possible, since we now have no applicants.
And a background in general contracting, fire life safety systems would be a help in this commission. Thank you. The next item, please?
Next item, the City Councilor's staff comments.
I'm going to go out of order, if my colleagues would indulge me, because I know this has been a burning issue. It's not on the agenda, so unfortunately, we can't engage in our usual high level of discussion. However, it involves the tree issue, and anyone who is listening to the Ken and John and Ken Show perhaps heard several days of discussion. Some of my colleagues were interviewed directly, others through correspondence. We were called everything from the three idiots to the five idiots to the one idiot. But, Mr. Howard, there is a development on this, and as our city attorney, responsible for prosecutions, would you please inform us, the public, the collards, anyone else who's interested out there in TV and radio land, what the latest development is, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, yesterday I faxed to the legal counsel for the collards a letter in summary notifying them that we will not, well, let me back up, that after going through some of the preliminary background of the case, noting that we have fully reviewed all the facts and circumstances, particularly with emphasis on the calculation of the amount of damage to the trees, that our office will, has determined that we will not pursue legal action to collect any civil penalty in the case. We have noted that we might set up what we call an informal office conference to discuss the matter, but we will not, I repeat, not, be pursuing any civil penalties in the case.
Yes, and it is coming, the ordinance itself is still coming back, as I correct, Mr. Allen.
The plan is December 18th?
It's on, it's on the agenda for December 18th. And at such time, we may review it, discover what lessons we've learned in both the ordinance, the liability section, and the damage appraisal section, and we can really roll up our sleeves and get into it once again at that time.
That, that's the intention, is to
Intention.
Bring you a full report on not only the ordinance as it's drafted, and the methodology for calculating fees, but also some options for you to look at.
Thank you. Let me go to Mr. Quintero, and we'll start our staff and council comments at this time.
Okay, well, I was very happy to hear the news or to read the letter. However, if possible, before December 18th, before we talk about the ordinance, I would like to discuss what happened with this particular case. Specifically, I'd like to discuss the issues pertaining to the collards residents, because in my opinion, the entire issue showed a lack of judgment on the part of the staff, and I think we need to discuss it as soon as possible. It's been months since this took place. They finally have a letter, but they must have had one heck of a Thanksgiving. So not only do I think these residents deserve an apology, but I just want to know exactly what happened. I think the public needs to know, and the city council members themselves needs to know how someone could receive a, was it $347,000, I think, a $347,000 fine in the mail, and the elected officials were never even notified. So I'd like to put it on the agenda before the 18th, because talking about the ordinance doesn't, in my opinion, absolve the staff from whatever it is that, that happened, and whoever it is that made the decision to send this to two people who, remember, got a fire, got a notice from the fire department, hired a tree service, a licensed tree service, and then were met with this response. So the sooner the better.
Can we segregate a postmortem, if you will, from the, the tree ordinance, Mr. Howard? Do you have enough time to do that and present the, the facts, the reports, or whatever else might be needed to respond to Mr. Quintero's request?
Well, in answer to the first question, segregation is yes, but, and here's, as I say, the devil's in the details, the information I have is contained in a fairly significant, very complex, technical report that still needs to be fully vetted, to make sure we have all of our facts correct, as well as now getting into other issues that Councilmember Quintero asked for, and we may or may not be able to have that available before the 18th, given the other issues that the council has coming up on the agenda.
Mr. Starbird?
And I'd like to add, the handling of it starts with the process that's described in the ordinance, and that's one of the difficulties here, not trying to shirk any responsibility for the handling and being sensitive to the level of the fines, but it, but all of that process begins with the way in which the ordinance says you'll establish what the penalty is for, for trimming of trees without a permit. So I don't know, you can try and unwind the process from the ordinance, but it really all does start with the ordinance.
Well, no, Mr. Starbird, I totally and completely disagree. That, the idea that a resident received a letter with a $347,000 fine in the mail, and the five elected officials were not aware that this letter even went out? We go into closed session on a regular basis. Someone sneezes in the city, and we go into a closed session to talk about it, and we never even knew that this was going out. I totally disagree. We need to talk about this as soon as possible. That's my opinion on this. We don't need to white-lip. The ordinance pertaining to trees, that issue needs to be resolved. We need to fine-tune the ordinance, there's no question about it. However, I'm talking about a document that went out with a $347,000 number on it. Who made that decision to send it to these residents? That's what I want to know, and I haven't been told. No one's told me. I don't know about the other council members.
Okay, so not so, not so broad, but how did this get sent without us being?
Right.
I think we should be able to get that fairly quickly. Am I?
Well, we'll take direction from you, Mr. Mayor. The 18th is two weeks away from, from, we actually have three meetings, so that's three weeks away from today's meeting. We'll do, we'll do it at whatever meeting you ask for.
Well, we'd like it as soon as possible. I think my, my colleagues would tend to agree with that, at least that, that part of it.
I'm trying to understand, what is to be said by dragging a city employee out in the public and chastising him? Obviously, somebody in the city mailed it. Did they use good common sense in mailing it, rather than raising it through the pipeline? No, they didn't. It was mailed. Somebody okayed it. But to air it here, is that the best judgment we can make, is to put the person up here and say, why'd you do that, your supervisor? Why'd you allow it to happen?
We're beginning to discuss, we're beginning to discuss the issue, and really, the only, the only issue before us is, do we want to agendize this item, and how soon would we like it?
I don't, I don't care to, I'm not trying to hide things.
I understand.
I just don't see what we gain.
Let me get, let me get input as to how, whether we want to hear this, and how soon we'd like to hear it. Mr. Draymond?
Well, yes, I'd like to hear it, as soon as possible, but I feel a little constrained. I, you know, we're sitting up here saying, we're beginning to debate it. I know what you mean, Mr. Mayor, and I know what the city attorney would say to us as to what that means. I'm not sure the public understands what we mean when we say we're beginning to debate it, you know? Public's sitting there saying, well, of course, you're beginning to debate it. It should have been debated two months ago. What we're talking about is to actually have official discussion up here, without noticing it to the public, so that all of you can also tell us how we've bundled this, as, as you know. But, yeah, I think we do need to, to find out how it happened. I just, I don't agree 100% with either of my colleagues, actually. Yeah, one of the questions I've asked, and I put it in writing, which is, you know, how did it occur, whether it's bad math or whatever, how did it occur that somebody said, yeah, this makes sense, let's send this out? You know, whether we want to stand that person up here and beat them with a brick bat, that's another question. But I don't altogether agree with Councilmember Quintero either. And I just want to go on the record with this. This would have been my comments. Can I go ahead? Because
If they pertain to this issue.
They do. They pertain to the issue. I believe they do. First of all, it's not just the staff. I've been a critic of the staff in this city, too. You all know that. But this isn't just about the staff, this is about us. We've also known about this for, for two months. Councilmember Yusefian read an email here one evening from, on this exact topic. A month ago, I asked a question here about the fines and so on. It's not just about the staff, it's about us. And to say it's just about the staff, and we need to find out how the staff messed this up, isn't sufficient. Mr. Mayor, you said, we'll have this, this later, we'll have this discussion, and we'll talk about what we have learned about the process and the procedure. I, I hope we also find out what we've learned about our own lack of, if you will, contact directly with the public from the standpoint that we lose sight of, of what individual residents of our city go through on a day-to-day basis, just to, you know, put food on the table, and pay the rent, and keep the kids in proper orthodonture, and so on, that we somehow isolate ourselves from all of this. It's our fault, too. I didn't hear any of my colleagues, myself included, jumping up and down up here, saying, we need to fix this. A mistake was made, we should have acknowledged that right off, and gone from there. That's a very human thing. There is nothing more human than having made a mistake and saying, you know what? We blew it, let's fix it. I'm glad we're doing this now. I really am. I think this is a great, a great step forward. But I just don't want to hang this all on staff and say it's just their doing. It's also our doing. We didn't jump up and down to pursue it either. Glad we're doing it now, and, and I won't go any further, because I don't want to, I don't want it to become official debate, so.
Thank you, Mr. Draymond. Mr. Starbird?
You have the meetings of the 4th, the 11th, and the 18th. We are working to bring you in a complete review of this on the 18th. If you'd like this other piece of it sooner, we'll do our best to do it sooner.
I think we'd like it as soon as possible. Can we make it by the 11th?
If, if that's what you'd like, we'll make it by the 11th.
Is that, that's
It's fine.
Two weeks from today. Mr. Weaver?
Council comments now?
Well, as long as we're, anything else on this particular issue?
Yeah, I've got something more to say.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'll, I'll come to you next, Mr. Weaver.
I, I think in the process of trying to agendize this item and talking about it, I think we also need to inform the collards, also the gentleman who, if you guys remember, I tried to sneak it in on the written comments, if you remember that very quick, the man who wrote a four-page email to me about $174,000 fine that he got, I was kind of chastised because it was not really written comments, but I was trying to sneak it in, because I tried to bring this council's attention to that. I think that individual also needs to be contacted. We need to contact all those people that have gotten very hefty fines, so they have some input into how they felt, what happened, and what the interaction was between them and staff. I think that's very important, because part of this city is to provide good customer service, and we try very hard to do that. But once in a blue moon, we fail. I'd like to know where the failures are and fixed it, so we don't continue it. So I think that would be very important. Those individuals need to be
So there's three or four others that are affected at this point?
I think we got a nice big hefty thing. We know where they are.
So we can contact them and make sure they receive
Another one, $57,000.
Councilmember Yusefian's correct, there's probably about three or four others.
Yeah, okay.
I think that would be fine, fine to do. Okay, Mr. Weaver?
On the same subject matter, I disagree with Mr. Draymond to a degree. My approach has always been, when I get an email or a letter about a city problem, I go to the city manager. Now, so my colleagues like to sit here and read it to the whole public. I don't believe in that. I don't need to start embarrassment or, or railing. I take it the city manager, and I say, what is this? Will you look into it, investigate it? When I took the email to him, he said, staff is looking into it, and will report back to the council. Now, I don't know what more I'm supposed to do. We could have walked him up here and said, well, what's your time, Mr. Starbird, and said, we want it quicker. But there's two ways to approach it. I don't sit here and do it in the public. I go to the city manager who runs the city. That's what I did in this case. And that was before Mr. Yusefian sat here and read it, because we all got it. But I didn't sit on it and throw it in the wastebasket. I acted on it. I went to the man I should go to.
Okay. Well, we can, we can discuss that, that also.
I'll just say what I did.
On the 11th. I appreciate that.
I didn't drop the ball.
On the 11th. Okay, now, aside from this special item of discussion, in quotation marks, Mr. City Attorney, Mr. Weaver, back to our, our normal routine.
Guys downstairs, do you have that picture I asked you to put up? Okay. Saturday, 10:00 AM. I attended with this group, I'm in the middle of the picture there, and at 68-plus years, I'm the youngest person in that picture. They were attempting to set a Guinness Book of Records for soccer players, all of them minimum age, 70 years of age. And they had them coming from all over the region to play in the soccer match, and they needed witnesses. They had to write a statement and sign it to go into the Guinness Book of Records. Just about everybody on there, you could tell by the accents, they did not come from America. Because when these 70-year-olds were playing soccer, they were not in America. They were in Europe somewhere. That's what I was told. I think there's only two or three there that happened to be from America. And they play every week, and then I guess after this game, they were going to have a 60-some-year-old group play. So they're looking for this to go in the Guinness Book of Records. And if you saw off to the left, although you'd see the, the cloud from Malibu of the fire that was occurring, and we had crystal clear air up the sports complex. So it was a fun time. I felt very young. Those guys were all in shape, too.
So if they win the record, do you also win it for the oldest water boy?
Maybe.
Youngster, youngster compared to them.
I mean, I felt, it was unusual to stand there with all these guys.
Were you able to run?
No, I just stood there and talked.
Well, that's, that's quite an achievement. Congratulations to everyone who participated. Mr. Yusefian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I have three items, but one of them has already been dealt with. I will deal with the other one. I think we all got these facts today. An individual sent this, this has to do with three young gentlemen who are from a high school, local high school, that basically took the opportunity to chase down a vehicle that had ran two individuals down and tried to escape. They actually went down and found the individual and turned it over to the police. The people who were subject of this basically have asked to have something done for these three high school, Crescent High School individuals. So at this time, I would like to ask you, Mr. Mayor, if possible, to give them a mayor's commendation for good citizenship, because as you know, there are times that we have to have a $10,000 fine for people to just come forward. This was one of those cases, the kids actually chased after the guy. You know, generally, high school kids, they don't care, but they were very unique individuals, so for them to take time and just run around and find him. And we will have the names tomorrow if they were going to fax it to the city, so I would appreciate that.
We're already, I did, I think we all received that.
Yes.
And we are currently working on
Hold. For the project to you.
Right, right. Ms., Ms. Dottie Stone
Yes.
Is suggesting
She happens to be in the audience.
And we are currently working on that, to recognize these three good Samaritans in an appropriate way.
Okay. The second item that I would like to bring to your attention is, today is an interesting day. Today is Ginger's birthday, actually, Ginger Brumberg's birthday, and she didn't quite make it. But as you know, I've been going through some of her stuff, and I ran into something she gave all of us when we got elected to city council, and it's a pocket version of the Declaration of Independence and the Constitution of the United States. In recent weeks, there has been all kinds of happenings, so I thought I, I give copies to my colleagues. I made some copies of the Bill of Rights, the First Amendment, if you can pass out. The reason I'm doing this is because, this is 45 words, ladies and gentlemen, just 45 words, very brief, as the city attorney would say, and very succinct, and I would like to read this. "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion, or forbidding the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or of the press, or the right of people peaceably to assemble and to petition the government for redress of grievances." I think these are very powerful words, 45 words, no more. This is what we deal with when people stand on that lectern. They talk about petitioning us to deal with their grievance. That is what I took an oath the day I became a councilman. That is what we all took an oath. That is our job. I took that oath several times, but the first time I took it when I became a citizen of the United States. Now, why did I bring this up? Because sometimes, in this country, we forget what is it that we have. We take it for granted, especially the ones who are not born, especially the ones who are born in this country. The ones who come from outside, we all came from somewhere else. We know it wasn't good, that's why we came here. And we cherish these rights. The ones who are here, they don't know what it is out there, so they take it for granted. I don't. Why do I bring this up? First, today is Ginger's birthday, and I think she would love somebody talking about the Constitution of the United States. By the way, this is all marked up by her.
Excuse me, that's not the Constitution?
No, no. But, well, yeah, that's Bill of Rights, Bill of Rights, but I mean, I brought the Constitution of the United States with me, because she has it all marked up in here. Interestingly, what she has marked up. But nevertheless, what caused this alarm to me is because our city attorney last week put an interdepartmental memo in front of us, marked confidential. In all due respect, Mr. Howard, I do not consider this document confidential. We have talked about confidential issues. This is just your analysis of whether or not a councilman can go down from that podium, speak or not. And there was another document that was brought up, and it deals And there was another document that was brought up, and it deals with what brevity is and so on and so forth, which was not marked confidential correctly, because these are not confidential. We're not doing anything that is confidential. My issue with this whole thing is, I understand certain things happen on this dais, for political reasons or not political reasons, whatever the reasons are. There's one thing that I would urge all my colleagues to keep in mind. We took an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of State of California, and part of that is the Bill of Rights. And the day we stump all over this is the day that you will end up having the biggest enemy in your life, and that's going to be me, because I'm going to fight to the nail. This is the only patch of land in this planet that we could say whatever we want to say to the President of the United States, and nobody knocks at our door and hauls us out, and nobody sees us again. Only place. And I'm not going to let anybody, no city attorney, no mayor, no council member, no one, take that away from me, you, and anybody else in this country. So that was my brief speech.
Well, I hope my colleague isn't suggesting that those of us who are born here in this country hold these First Amendments any less dear. Some of us were born here, some of us are second generation, such as me, some of us have parents that were disabled American veterans, such as me, who understand what the freedoms are precisely from going out and defending them for this country, and whose families were immigrants not long before that. I, for one, have a commendation from the ACLU for upholding the public's rights related to the First Amendment. I really don't feel I need a lecture about it. And, Mr. Yusefian, if I ever see anybody of my colleagues up here jumping up to abridge your rights, you won't have a chance to tackle them. I'll do it for you. So far, I haven't seen it. Perhaps you have. So I just wanted to, I, I just wanted to make that...
Professor Quintero... Yeah, I think some of us would just like to get a word in edgewise occasionally, you know, Mr. Yusefian, because I think the sheer volume is, I think, what probably we're concerned about, not your right to speak, but the on and on that starts at nine in the morning and eleven o'clock at night. We're still listening. I think that's it, more than anything else.
Well, since we're talking law, and I've studied law just a few years, the First Amendment is not all-encompassing. It does not give one the right to go into a crowded movie theater and yell "Fire!" at the top of their lungs. It does not give someone the right to come to a meeting and disrupt that meeting. It does not give someone the right to insult, demean, and slander another person. So, yes, I'm familiar with the First Amendment, Mr. Yusefian. I think the city attorney would agree that your, your efforts at analyzing it are rather cursory. It's a much more in-depth forty-five words than, than initially you portray them to be. On a lighter note, I would like to invite everyone to visit Perkins Plaza. We're going to have our annual tree lighting at City Hall right outside on Perkins Plaza. That's going to be on December 5th this year, of course. That's going to be in less than ten days. It's going to start at seven PM. We're going to have Santa, we're going to have hot chocolate and candy canes, we're going to have performances by some of our local schoolchildren, carols and the like. So I invite everyone to come out. We are going to officially light the holiday tree, or the Christmas tree, or the Kwanzaa tree, or the Hanukkah bush, or whatever particular faith you have. Before December 5th, however, we do have a smaller version of our Christmas tree, designed and erected by Chris Peplo. Is he in Public Works or Parks? Chris Peplo has put up a great tree with handmade decorations, so the holiday spirit is certainly coming to Glendale City Hall. I invite everyone to come out and attend. It'll be a lot of fun. And let's move on. Mr. Kosakian.
Five is consent items, and the following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before motion is proposed.
So moved. I have a request to pull five E, so if you'll amend your motion to eliminate five E.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Council members, Drayman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Wait, I was absent. I have to stay.
Yusefian?
Hi.
Mayor Njerian?
Yes. Five E, please.
Five E is director of Public Works regarding proposed vacation of a portion of the public alley located north of Broadway, west of Louis Street, and bounded on the west by the existing north-south alley vacation case number 163B. At E1 is motion authorizing city clerk to set a public hearing for the vacation.
Margaret Hammond has submitted a card. Hello, Margaret.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff, and people, friends in the audience here and there. My name is Margaret Hammond. As you well know, I am a great opponent of giving away our land. All we have to do is look at the example of handing Mr. Caruso what was considered worthless property. At one time, way down at, what, thirty-three million dollars value, it went up to seventy-five or seventy-six, and I wager that property would be easily worth three-hundred-and-fifty million right now. We handed it over off the, off the top of our heads. I object to giving away street. I object to giving away alleys, laneways, whatever you want to call them. These are necessary for the flow of traffic in our city. We keep closing them down, closing them up, and giving them away. What is the value of that land? I know, I'll be told it's worthless. No. How much is a square foot of property in downtown Glendale? I'd like to know the value of that property. Don't tell me it's worthless. People are willing to pay millions of dollars for that property. I object to it on that it's necessary, for instance, for the fire department to be able to access buildings, and that's one thing, alone, let alone why we're giving it away. They want it, and not only that, but I understand by giving it away that the people that we're giving it to are going to be able to add two more stories to their building, because we're giving them that extra footage. I object to that, and I am going to stand up and I'm going to keep saying that. I object to that giving away of our property to people that just want it and use it, and it's to their benefit, not to the public benefit, not to my personal benefit or my neighbor's benefit. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Margaret. Is there any other discussion on that item? Anyone?
Second.
Motion.
Vacating it, we're not, are we giving it?
Mr. Howard?
It's going to be a passageway.
It's going to be a pedestrian passageway, is my understanding. We would be vacating street. Most of our streets, there are some old ones still that we have a fee interest in, but most of the streets, essentially, we have the right through an easement to utilize it for street purposes. So when we vacate it, essentially, we're giving the underlying fee back to the adjoining property owners.
This isn't a street, it's an alley.
Yeah, alley's a street the same way. Again, I was trying to actually look through the planning commission report to assure myself that this was an easement. I can recall that we do have some older streets, possibly not alleys, where we have some fee interests. This is more, without seeing it, though, I don't want to speak out of school, but I have to, I'm pretty confident this is just a vacation of an easement.
Besides, this is just to set a time for a hearing, right?
Well, this matter is to set the hearing, correct. All this matter is to set the hearing.
To just set a hearing.
It is a public hearing.
This is not vacating, just to set a public hearing.
That's correct.
You? Roll call, please.
Council members, Drayman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Yusefian?
Hi.
Mayor Njerian?
Yes.
The next item, please.
Next item is oral communication, and discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for an investigation and a report.
Thank you. Before we start calling the names, I'd like to address a few thoughts regarding code of conduct, which we've discussed several times. There have been those in the past few weeks who've tried to disrupt council meetings. We at council have important business to conduct, and part of that involves hearing from the public on issues that are on the agenda and on issues that are not on the agenda. At all times, from the opening of the meeting until the adjournment, the mayor is in control of the meeting, and I'm not going to let anyone take over the meeting from the council. In general, we follow Roberts' rules of order, and the key word is "order." I've asked the city attorney, Mr. Howard, to come back to council with a code of conduct that we as a council can discuss and hopefully adopt. However, due to the continuing outbursts from members of the public, I'm instituting under my authority as mayor several interim rules of conduct. And ironically, I was attempting to explain these rules of conduct before I was interrupted, shouted at, and sworn at by a speaker last meeting. Here are my thoughts, and here are the rules. No speaker appearing before council shall engage in any abusive, slanderous, obscene, or profane remarks. No speaker shall engage in any disorderly conduct which disturbs or disrupts the orderly conduct of any meeting. Every member of the council, that's you guys, shall cooperate with the mayor in preserving order and decorum. A member of the council, once recognized, shall not be interrupted when speaking unless it is for the purpose of calling that person to order. City council meetings shall be conducted in a courteous manner. Public and council members will be allowed to state their positions in an atmosphere free of slander or threats of violence. The mayor shall give warnings at any time during the remarks, and in the event that the individual still violates the rules of decorum, the mayor may cut off comment or debate. Debate and comment on policy is healthy. Debate and comment on personalities is not. And as you know, and as we've been doing in the weeks and months prior, by ordinance, you are entitled to address the council for up to five minutes. However, if you voluntarily agree to limit your time to three minutes or less, I can extend the courtesy of placing your speaking card at the top of the pile. We will go through the three-minute speakers and then to the five-minute speakers until such time as sixty minutes elapses. We will not count time involving questioning from council or staff. At such time, we will suspend public communications. We will conduct the city of the business, the action items and the hearings, and then return to public communications for those that are left at the conclusion of our action items. The first speaker is Doris Tweet.
I've got a question for the city attorney.
Mr. Quintero.
I didn't have a chance to analyze, looking at the First Amendment and the mayor's suggestions, but, Mr. City Attorney, in terms of the content at the podium, as long as it falls within the jurisdiction of the city of Glendale, I believe the people are allowed to pretty much say what they want. We're not going to be able to regulate content.
No, sir. We don't regulate viewpoint of the speakers. They, the only limitation is that they speak on matters within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council, or of the city of Glendale, I should say. Which the council authority...
I have a question. Can the man unilaterally make those decisions?
Under the Charter and Roberts rules, which we follow pursuant to our municipal code, the mayor is the presiding officer.
I understand.
So the mayor, and, and the rules the mayor is talking about are essentially the, the standard rules of conduct that the mayor could enforce essentially anyway.
I don't have a problem with the...
In terms of rules of decorum, I think what he's done, and I'm interpreting it as basically stating what essentially are common rules of conduct for speakers in any event, that whether it's disruptive, whether it's obscene, which is unlawful under the fetal code, those are types of things that we would enforce even without having any kind of formal ordinance or resolution, because it's something that we've actually have enforced many times in the past where other individuals have been sitting as mayor, and I can recite a couple of those instances, instances that I can recall. So that's the way I'm interpreting them, essentially, a repeating of what are the commonly ordinary understood rules of order that a presiding officer can generally impose as part of, in this case, oral communications or the, the conduct of a meeting of an assembly.
I don't have a problem with most of the stuff that deals with the Roberts rule. I do take exception to the fact that the content of the items that the people come here on the lectern to speak, and I do disagree with you on the issue of what profanities are due to the, the Supreme Court ruling that basically had to deal with Mr. Farwell and other individual. I think they even made a movie about it, and it was very, very terrible stuff, and still the Supreme Court upheld the fact that the First Amendment took precedence regardless of how horrible and terrible items that, that individual had said about Reverend Farwell. So I have, you know, the mayor can do what the mayor can do, but I am not going to sit here and agree with that type of thing with the speaker. I sat in here while MZVZ III, how many of you remember MZVZ?
We're getting off point, Mr. Yusefian.
No, no, no. He sat here and called us bubonic-infested rats, and I was the mayor, and he continued to do that week after week after week, and I did not say anything. I allowed him to do it.
That's your prerogative, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Howard?
Mr. Mayor, members of council. In, in analyzing First Amendment jurisprudence, there's, I think, the, the Farwell case is fine to cite, but not really applicable to the situation we have here. The more appropriate case is White versus Norwalk, which is a Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals decision that actually dealt with the, the consideration of removing someone from a council meeting who actually used profane comments. And the court of the Ninth Circuit indicated that the mere using of the words themselves doesn't rise to the level of allowing a elected official or elected body to remove somebody. It has to be connected with the disruption of a meeting. So the words themselves can't be the basis for removing someone. That, though, in connection with disruption of a meeting, is okay. And the Ninth Circuit so stated that, and the US Supreme Court denied review of that.
I don't want to take too much time. Could you please write that and send it to me, so I can research it?
I, I actually have it right here for you, if you'd like.
Thank you.
Mr. Drayman? Well, now, we've heard from our two highest legal authorities, Mr. Yusefian and Mr. Howard, not necessarily...
No, he's higher.
Oh. I would just like to go on the record for saying that anyone, if I am ever mayor, that refers to me as a, a what kind of rat?
Bubonic-infested rat.
A bubonic-infested rat will get an A for creativity and imagination from me. Compared to some of the language we have heard here in the last month or so...
I thought he was pretty creative.
Right. Well, it's not really a humorous matter, but I think we've said what needs to be said. Doris, how are you?
I'm fine. How are you?
Welcome back.
Okay.
Do you like your old chair back, or...
Oh, I'm fine, right here. Mayor, council members, Mr. Starbird and staff, my name's Doris Tweet, and I'm here to invite you and the community to an event. We know that you have all kinds of invitations to various events, but this is a three-day event. You can choose your day. Glendale Beautiful, in cooperation with the Parks, Recreation, and Community Services Division, will host the annual Christmas Open House and Festival of Lights at the historic nineteenth-century Casa Adobe de San Rafael, located at thirteen-thirty Dorothy Drive, continuing the traditional event observed by residents in the late teen, in the late nineteenth and early twentieth centuries. Following the custom, lights are strung along the rooftop of the adobe, and candles placed in paper bags illuminate the walkways and grounds. The veranda and interior of the Casa Adobe are decorated with Christmas tree, greens, and poinsettias. Festive music, homemade cookies. I will not be making homemade cookies, so not to worry about that. Hot apple cider, which is Ginger Brenberg's recipe, and other beverages create a pleasant and memorable atmosphere. Admission is free. December 7th, on Friday, the Luminaryus and Open House is from five to eight. Mariachi group will perform from six to seven-thirty PM. December 8th is the pinata party, two to four, and there'll be a folklorica group. And the Luminaryus and Open House, five to eight, and the Crescenta Alley High School Charismatics Chamber Choir will entertain from six to seven. December 9th, the Open House from one to three PM. The Casa Adobe de San Rafael nineteenth... The Casa Adobe de San Rafael, 19th-century home of Thomas and Maria Sanchez, preserved for future generations to enjoy, has been cared for by members of Glendale Beautiful in cooperation with the City of Glendale Parks, Recreation and Community Services. Thomas Sanchez was an early sheriff in Los Angeles County. For more information, contact Gladys Wymore at 818-246-3634. Thank you. I hope you can make it.
Thank you, Doris. The next speaker is Sergio Amador.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Distinguished members of the city council, friends, we, the students of Glendale Community College and members of this community, having for some time been aware, due to the exposure and newsprint, of strained relationships among city council members, have arrived at this honorable chamber with the desire to help the city council with this challenging situation. We want to remind this governing body that the many resources of the Glendale Community College are available for the betterment of members of the community, public employees, elected officials, and appointees. Distinguished city council, allow us to point out, for instance, our class of Human Relations 110, whose pedagogic core sits on the premise of how to get along with each other. To relieve the stress associated with operating a computer keyboard or participating in a city council meeting by the same matter, we at Glendale Community College have recently started a cutting-edge class known as Computer Applications in Business Office Technology 060, to teach how to operate a computer by voice only in a sort of watch. Allow us also to single out our Business Communication 152 class, whose curriculum includes Strategies in Conflict Resolution, as well as cultural dimensions of a diverse society, including communications across generations. Important learning objectives of the Business Communication 152 class are the segments Building Positive Relationships, Dealing with Criticism, Managing Conflict, and, when dealing with difficult people, how to use a win-win approach as a negotiating style. We believe that now that our Glendale City Council is preparing to renew its function of working together for the benefit of our community, the Glendale College curriculum is an important asset to be considered when preparing the next round of leadership training of the city council members. Indeed, the city council, in their wisdom, could clearly see that the communication and listening abilities taught by a class like the Business Communication 152 should be an essential skill to be acquired by any employee or staff member, if only to provide good customer service to members of the community. Certainly, classes like the ones mentioned represent not only the skills desired for our future city leaders, but also the training necessary of our city fathers. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Amador. Don Mason. Don Mason is next for three minutes, followed by Herbert Milano.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, other members of the city council, city staff, and the audience. My name is Don Mason. I'm a newspaper journalist who lives in Glendale for twenty-eight years, since 1979, and I do follow the politics in Glendale on a regular basis. This is a matter that I wanted to bring to your attention. I am saddened and angry about the city of Glendale joining these secular progressives who are ruining our country in eliminating the word "Christmas" and what it stands for as an important element of our traditional values. On December 6th, pardon me, on December 5th, Wednesday of next week, the city will hold its annual tree lighting ceremony to kick off the Christmas season. Yet, the program is billed wrongly as a holiday tree lighting ceremony. This false identification of Christmas was started last year by the city, but public reaction made the Glendale news press identify the featured tree in its front-page picture, following the event as the traditional Christmas tree. We thank the news press for that. Why has the city of Glendale changed the name of the Christmas tree lighting event, apparently not to offend those residents who are in the minority in Glendale? But at the same time, the city is unknowingly siding with the damaging secular progressives who are intensifying their Christmas elimination campaign every Christmas season. I have the feeling that many Americans are not aware of what is going on, which is just fine with the secular progressives who represent the far-left ideology and are a defining threat to the well-being of the United States. In our country's democratic system, the majority is the central voice of America. Despite what others may say, America is a Christian country. May I repeat, America is a Christian country. Figures taken from the U.S. Census Bureau in 2001 will tell you that there are 159,506,000 Christians in the United States. Compare that to the Jewish faith of only 2,831,000, the Buddhist faith of only 1,820,000, the Islamic faith of only 1,144,000, and the Hindus, who number only 766,000. Let's define the meaning of Christmas. It is observed as the birthday of Jesus Christ, the Savior of Christianity. This religious birthday is celebrated not only in America but throughout the world. December 25th is not the observance of some words like "holiday season" or "happy holidays" that have been introduced for convenience sake or for commercial reasons. May I speak just one more sentence? If the secular progressives have their way, they will next be going after Santa Claus. This issue is a serious matter of proper identification of the Christmas season.
Next speaker is Herbert Milano. Thank you, Mr. Mason.
All right. Thank you for listening.
Got a lively audience today. Mr. Milano, three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, members of the city council. My name is Herbert Milano. My, could I talk about this last issue, but I have a few other things in mind. I think that the students who came here from Glendale Community College are bringing certain solutions to the city council. I think it's outstanding, because I think the issue that we're facing is an issue of communications, effective communications. Let me tie that in with the issue of the tree ordinance. That situation that happened with the tree ordinance really is not the first time. Three years ago, merchants from Foothill Boulevard suggested to the city staff if they could perhaps have the light poles, you know, the wooden light poles that are so ugly, because everything else around Foothill Boulevard by the county looks really nice, and they can suggest to see if the city could fund putting those underground. What happened, Mr. Najarian, you were not here at the time, was that those merchants got bills for from $4,000 to $30,000 each. So it's not the first time that a surprise like this has actually been perpetrated on the residents of Glendale. Now, I have been thinking a lot about the budget deficits, especially with regard to the national level and the state level, in California, the budget deficits at the county level, and I've been worried about the budget deficits in other cities like the city of San Diego and wonder how we're doing. So I decided to take a study, do a study of the budget summaries from the year 2000. And this is the shocking information that I have for you, and I provided some information there for each one of you. The Glendale population since the year 2000, as measured by households, has increased by about 3%. Yet, some department expenditures have gone up by as much as 79%, 87% during the same period of time. Now, these are just departmental budget increases. And then I decided to take a look at the salaries of individual members, especially those that belong to the GMA, and I looked at salary increases of 40%. During the same period of time, the Consumer Price Index has gone up on an average of 3% a year. That makes it about 20% during that whole period of time. We are spending well beyond our means, but the shocking thing about it is that when I look at these charts and these graphs, it shows that we're taking money away from our infrastructure to fund this. We take money away from public works to fund those increases. And that, to me, is a very significant problem that we have, that we need to face, because the one thing that was missing from all these budgets was a trend analysis. You see a snapshot, but once you look at the trend, you look at the population hardly changing, it increases that are astronomical, if not done right criminal, with regard to what is happening, because the infrastructure is now being given up for the sake of salary increases, and I think that the city needs to communicate effectively precisely what those issues are.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. Vace Mangasarian is the last three-minute speaker.
Good evening, Glendale. Good evening, gentlemen. I am Vace Mangasarian. Mr. Najarian, last week before I got to this podium, you started your disgraceful courtroom theatrics, insulting and harassing. That's when I lost my cool and stormed out of this dais. Last week, you infringed upon my Constitution right to free speech under the First Amendment. In this hand, once a week for three or five minutes, we practice the privilege from this podium. Mr. Najarian, you are abusing your title and mayoral position with your dictatorial behavior, which is—it is not right. Being a lawyer, you should know that, and I'm not going to the rest of that stuff because you won't like it. Mr. City Attorney, I am giving you a notice tonight. Mr. Najarian is abusing my—his position as a mayor, and he is infringing upon my Constitution right to free speech. If you do not—if he does not stop his dictatorial abuse, I will take a legal action against the city and the mayor. I have already reported this abuse to ACLU. Nobody is above the law. If it is about time we, the citizens of this city, start locking horns with our elected officials and not allow them to continue their exercise in vanity, vulgarity, and self, congratulations. Two weeks ago, Mr. Najarian asked the city attorney to come back with a code of conduct to maintain the decorum at the city council meetings. The court supposedly would establish a clear policy for what is acceptable behavior. Now, Mr. Najarian, don't you think you are seven months too late? It never ceases to amuse me when Mr. Najarian takes his head out of his blueberry, what kind of ostentatious wonder happens at this dais. I'm Vace Mangasarian, and let's not forget that you guys are elected to serve us. Thank you.
Next speaker is Dr. Richard Espiritu, five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council, staff, and the public. I am Dr. Richard Espiritu, and I'd like to address my favorite subject, the Americans with Disability Act. The city, at this present time, is completing their ADA site survey. Unfortunately, there are five issues that somehow got overlooked or fell through the cracks. One is the B-line transportation. That is a service. The other one is GTV-6. GTV-6 requires—there's a lot of talks about closed captioning or what have you. But the three issues that I would like to address tonight and go into depth with is number one is the public parking lots. There was a report written by Mr. McFaul in April saying that restriping of the public parking facilities to accommodate handicap parking requirements will be done. That was on April the 18th, 2006. That was not—has not been done. Several weeks ago, I presented parking information that I obtained from the city of Glendale, which had conflicting information. Now I understand that the city, here in City Hall, they're discussing who's going to do this work, the consulting work, to figure out if this is correct or not. The other one is—I'm following up, and this is something that you may want to look into, Mr. Drayman. On August the 14th, '06, I did a report, PowerPoint presentation. It was called Jailhouse Rock. The city attorney and I went through the city jail and took pictures and showed where a number of the facilities were not ADA compliant. If you want, you could go over to City Hall and look at the visiting area where they have no volume control. For some reason, that particular facility was also left off the plan. The other issue that I want to discuss is the disaster plan. I know we've been talking about this, and these other issues are programs that may cause some inconvenience or hardships on individuals, but the disaster plan can cause loss of life. Repeat that, loss of life. As of today, the Parks and Rec has requested from the fire department a copy of the disaster plan. As of today, they still have not received it so that they can be—so the consultants can look at it. I have some very interesting comments about that. My personal opinion is, I've looked into this thing, I've evaluated it. I don't think this thing exists. I hope I'm wrong, but if they take them four weeks to produce a document, I don't know why. Six months after January the 6th, 1992, a transition plan was supposed to go into effect for every city. We're approaching 2008. The city of Glendale does not have a transition plan. We are working on it piece by piece, but we still don't know what's wrong with the city as far as ADA requirements. ADA requires the opportunity for interested persons to participate in every aspect of this process. I believe I'm an interested person, because I've been talking about it for years now. I hope that the city believes that I do have some knowledge about this, and I would hope to God that in the near future, these things would be made available to the general public. I hope it'll happen before December the 15th, but we've been waiting for these documents, and according to this report, it was supposed to have been done in July. One of the other interesting comments is that we have spent on consultants $286,000 to do these reports, and these reports still have not been made available to us. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Dr. Espiritu. Mr. Yusefian?
Question to anyone who can answer it based on—I don't know if those numbers are accurate, we spend so much on consultants. If we have spent money on consultants, are those reports being done and when they will be completed?
Let me give a stab at most of that. Part of this is public works, part of it's parks, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Yusefian. We are about finished with the survey. This is the bulk of the process, and we are going through that right now and finalizing it. Mr. Espiritu, you mentioned parking lots. That's one of the issues that we're going back to include in. That's one of the issues that we're going back to include in there. The disaster plan, I'll have to check on. Evacuation plans are included as part of the survey. All the buildings in the city, along with the programs that the city has. Last time I saw it, it was about six four-and-a-half-inch binders that make up this survey. Next step is to go to the public. We want to plan at least two public meetings where we give the public the opportunity to comment on the surveys, or actually comment on what they feel are... Should be the city's priorities in addressing ADA concerns. In other words, they may come in and say, "We'd like you to focus on parking lots. We'd like you to focus on entry and access, ingress and egress to buildings." Those are the kind of input we take. That gets included in the transition plan, along with a designated coordinator that the city...
I'm assuming that will be advertised. People will know where it is, and they will go to and attempt to see...
Absolutely. And the plan that Mr. Chapchan and I have discussed, and that we want to talk to Mr. Starbord about, is to bring to you an update on where we are formally, and use that as the venue to announce when we're going to have the public meetings.
Thank you. The next speaker is Bruce Philpott, followed by Cynthia Lloyd Jones. Five minutes each.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council, and staff, and the public. My name is Bruce Philpott. We are here to discuss a proven approach to save $10 million per year in the fire department and double the resource level of emergency response when the next large earthquake or other disaster occurs. This is based upon a model developed by the Career Firefighter Study Group and fashioned after existing and proven models of service delivery. I propose the creation of a community fire reserve corps, similar to, but larger than, the reserve program developed by the Glendale Police Department. By taking qualified local volunteers into the ranks, the police department has been able to save several million dollars a year in position coverage over time. Yet there is no reserve program in the fire department. Other Class I cities, fire-rating Class I cities in Southern California, use reserves daily to partially staff engine and truck companies. Honey to Beach uses reserves as paramedics. I spoke with West Covina Fire Chief Richard Green several years ago about his reserve program. Having a reserve component for many years, he stated that state-certified reserves receive all the training the regulars receive, and that the reserves are highly motivated and perform as well as the regulars. He said he has no problem assigning a movie-certified reserve to a three-person engine company. Assigning one or two state-certified reserve firefighters to engine and truck companies would not jeopardize Glendale's Class I rating based on ISO standards. The utilization of reserves working with paid regulars is neither new nor radical concept. Studies of paid and combined, paid and reserve systems have concluded that the quality of performance has not diminished, citing two studies, the University City Science Center Study of 1989 and the Reason Foundation Study of 1992. On May 18th of last year, I met with Battalion Chiefs Don Wright and Anthony Arlenus. During that meeting, I asked them why the Glendale Fire Department had not developed a reserve corps like the Glendale Police Department. They both stated they did not know. The Glendale Police Reserves are all graduates of state-certified police academies. They are certified to perform the functions of regular officers working in patrol units throughout the city, and they do daily. The Glendale Fire Department should follow suit and develop a similar program requiring all firefighter reserves to be graduates of state-certified fire academies. After completion of probation and having fully demonstrated that they can do their job, they would ride along with regulars as they do in the police department. It might be interesting to note that several all-volunteer fire departments in this country have a Class I rating like Glendale, all reserves, all volunteers. In the police department, the ratio of regular officer to a reserve officer in the patrol car is one to one. I'm sorry, I failed to give this out again. Three times in a row.
I guess this will be the last time.
I cannot guarantee that through three in a row. The recommended ratio in the fire department with a reserve would be three to one, not one to one as in the police department, and they operate daily. The suggested requirements for becoming a Glendale Reserve firefighter are that they live in the city or within several miles of its borders, but preference for applicants living within the city. This would be extremely valuable because two-thirds of Glendale firefighters are not working at any time, and 95% of them live outside the city. Many actually live as far away as 40 miles or more, and some live in other counties. During a large earthquake, many off-duty firefighters may not be able to drive to Glendale because roadways may be compromised for days or even weeks. Glendale-based fire reserves could respond to any large disaster immediately during the response and recovery phases of large earthquakes and other disasters. What benefits would accrue to the citizens of Glendale? Number one, immediately save million dollars annually in position coverage over time. Two, expand on-duty fire operations personnel resources by 100%. Glendale would create... Three, Glendale would create a larger disaster reserve contingency by 100%. The 100 trained fire reserves would take their training and skills back to their local neighborhoods and help educate and prepare their families, relatives, and friends for the next big earthquake that is sure to happen, thereby increasing the knowledge and capability of citizens to manage the disaster. This would complement the current work of the Glendale Fire Department in educating as many citizens as possible in preparation for an earthquake. Disaster preparedness and response capability of fire resources would be taken to a new level in the city, and the model would serve as a beacon for other cities. Number four, if the fourth person staffing remained, staffing with a reserve as that fourth person, as many cities have done, would save the city an additional $6 million every year.
Thank you, Mr. Philpott. Ms. Lloyd Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Cynthia Lloyd Jones and council. Number five, as a recruiting incentive to join the voluntary ranks of the Community Fire Reserve Corps, the Glendale Fire Department could use 100... Use the 100 reserves as the primary labor pool for hiring future full-time firefighters. In Pasadena, their auxiliary programs specifically recruited local men and women into the reserve program. Many local young adults were motivated to apply and seek full-time employment by becoming a reserve first. The program was a huge success, with an 80% placement record into paid career positions. Here is a list of the ranks held by former Pasadena auxiliaries. Captains: five. Engineers: 13. Firefighters: 49. Firefighter paramedics: 20. Some auxiliary firefighters found full-time positions in other fire departments, including San Diego, Compton, Riverside, Alhambra, LA County, Long Beach, Arcadia, LA City, Corona, and Palo Alto. Six. Several weeks ago, I mentioned that engine and truck companies are taken out of service for a variety of ceremonial and special event activities that require other out-of-district fire companies to respond on emergency calls with potentially life-threatening delays resulting. There were over 300 requests in just one category of requests last year. With a large reserve corps, regulars and reserves can mix staffing and, by using the department's reserve engines and trucks, they can participate in these events and still leave the full complement of critical emergency response vehicles and firefighters in their neighborhood fire stations, ready to respond with maximum readiness and speed. This preserves geographic integrity and is the best practice for emergency response. This will save lives. Seven. Reserves can fill in for vacancies created during a portion of the shift due to such activities as captain and union meetings, measurements and fittings, and many other documented activities that take one firefighter away from his company for many hours. This assures desired staffing levels at all times. How are firefighters perceived by the public today in Pasadena? The department points with pride to the fact that a citizen satisfaction survey ranked the Pasadena Fire Department highest among operating departments in the city at a 97% approval rating. Most of the regular firefighters came from the auxiliary program. This is a clear testament to the value and efficacy of such programs. A local reserve fire program similar to Pasadena's would provide for faster infusion of a workforce that reflects the population it serves. By recruiting locally and by using reserves as primary labor pool for future appointments into the regular ranks, the fire department will gradually look more like the community it serves. The Glendale Fire Department has made some effort in this regard through its cadet and explorer programs. Those programs could feed applicants into the ranks of the Community Fire Corps Reserve. On August 21st, 2003, at 9:00 PM on Local Government Channel 6, a television interview was being conducted with interim Fire Chief Biggs in response to a question of why no men or women of Armenian descent were employed in the Glendale Fire Department. Then Assistant Chief Biggs said that they, Armenians, quote, "meet our standards, but they've not been successful in testing," end quote. He went on to say that thousands of qualified people apply from outside the immediate area, and that local people have not been successful yet. The Pasadena Fire Department has proven that local men and women can perform firefighter duties as well as someone living 50 miles away. Affirmative action laws are now gone, and cities no longer legally require to build a diverse workforce. The city should look beyond the law and come to the same conclusion that private and corporate entities have. It is good business to have a workforce that mirrors the population it serves. This program would also accelerate the placement for people of Armenian, Asian, and Hispanic descent, and other groups who have a significant presence in the city. There are only two Armenian firefighters in Glendale, and both have been recently hired. The city of Glendale serves an Armenian population that represents 40% of all the overall population, and many elderly Armenians, as well as others, do not speak proficient English. This language barrier compromises medical and other emergency response teams' ability to provide the best and safest services. Bilingual reserve firefighters could ride aboard the rescue ambulances whose districts serve large Armenian populations. The reserve program would also address the most underrepresented group in the fire service today, women. Recruitment efforts would target this qualified group, who have been clearly the subject of bias in joining the ranks of this culturally-driven, male-dominated government service. Next week, we will return and complete this segment of our presentation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Ms. Drayman?
I just have a quick question. I just have a quick question for either of you, and it's just a small question. I noticed on page five, it mentions... Well, it's a copyrighted document. I'm just wondering, who holds the copyright on this?
I do.
Thank you.
Ms. Yusefian?
On page four, you talk about 300 requests in just one category. What is that category?
Public education, where engines go out onto playgrounds of elementary schools.
Okay. Thank you very much. And one other question. Is Pasadena Class I?
No. Class II.
Okay, thank you.
However, Class II has outperformed Class I over the last year according to the ISO.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Philpott. Next speaker is Barry Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council staff, and of course, the public. I'm Barry Allen. So many things, so many things. Isn't it great to... You know, I'm really happy that I'm a member of the press. It took the press, it took KFI, to get some action from this city. Isn't that great? It doesn't go through the council, it doesn't go through anything else, but the power of the press, absolutely fantastic, and I'm really happy to be a part of it. One of the things that we've heard a lot about the holidays, and I want you to know that starting next Tuesday evening is going to be the First Light of Hanukkah. Hanukkah is the festival of freedom. We'll talk more about that. And Mr. Mazin is right, there are very few Jews in this country. There's only about 14 million, and actually in the world, and actually in Glendale. There are so few Jews in Glendale that a minyan, which is normally 10, is only six, just to give you an idea. There are people like Mr. Drayman, Mr. Howard, that would understand that. Thank you. And I think also Mr. Montero. But when I walked in, I was listening to Margaret Hammond say to Mayor Najarian that she's his best fan. Well, speaking of the best fan, and he also said when he was standing there, and about the secret meeting... Well, there was a secret meeting. I didn't get invited to it, but I guess the city attorney got invited to it, and it was Mr. Najarian's meeting, and Margaret Hammond, and maybe several others. And this happened, I guess, several months ago. And it touched upon the Airport Commission, which I know is on the agenda, but I'm not talking about the voting of replacement for that. But I think that Mr. Mayor Najarian should really tell us what occurred during that meeting. What was the purpose of the meeting, the people that were there? Because I think the public needs to know some of those behind-the-door things, and I think it's very important. And there are several other things that we've been asking for. We know that 457 employees received about $57 million last year. How much did it really cost the city? Was it 50% more? Was it 100% more? Did that $57 million just for those employees cost us $100 million? We haven't heard that. We haven't heard what our pension costs are. Just some of the things that are missing. We also heard about Mr. Milano's lawsuit and the cost of that. What about the cost of... What's it costing the city right now for the lawsuit involving a member of the Ganji family and the Gladys erosion problem? What is the total cost for that? And what is it projected to be, along with the payouts? I think those are things that we really need to hear about. And of course, we've already heard about the misconduct, so we're just going to set that aside. But we... I have had a number of phone calls this week about the accusation of misconduct by a city council member, having to do something with sexual orientation or sexual harassment. And I think those things need to be brought out to the public. The public needs to know when there are issues like that, rather than picking up a rumor or a phone call or reading about it here or there. I think it's very important that we are able to share that, and we have the strength in our morality to be able to deal with situations like that and deal with it on the dais, even without swearing, even without profanity, even without looking at issues of the First Amendment. And I heard Mr. Yusefian talk about the confidential memo. Yes, the attorney must keep the information confidential, but Mr. Yusefian, or Mr. Najarian, who already knows that, that once the client has the material, the client can share it with anybody they want, regardless of how many confidentiality stamps are on there. The attorney works for you. It doesn't work for the public, it works for you, and you can take that information and share it with whomever you'd like. So if I find it in my mailbox, fine, I'll read it over and understand it. And there are many, many other things, but again, thanks to John and Ken, and I know that the Collards and Oppenheim and others who have suffered those slings and arrows will breathe better this evening. Thank you. I'm Barry Allen.
Mr. Howard, I have a couple of questions, and please enlighten me. If I meet with you on a subject, do we have to tell Barry Allen what it's about?
No.
If I meet with some constituents who have a concern, do I have to tell Barry Allen what it's about?
No.
Do I have to give notice to Barry Allen that I'm going to meet with some constituents?
No.
Are you sure?
Yes, sir.
Can we direct Mr. Allen to maybe some appropriate reference that would... I think he's confusing Brown Act violations, meeting amongst council members. Is that perhaps what he's confused?
I'm not going to speculate on that. The only legal reference I can point out is probably the Dukemjian case, where the Supreme Court reversed the Court of Appeals decision that the calendar of the governor had to be released under the Public Records Act, and the Supreme Court said, "No, that falls within deliberative process privilege." And as a result, the calendar of who the governor was meeting with, at what time and when, was not considered to be a public record. That's the only kind of legal reference I can give you at this point.
I just want to make sure. If you give me a document marked confidential, and I disclose that to the public, am I in violation of any ordinance or rule or anything?
You're not in violation of any ordinance, however, it is not the individual council member that holds the privilege in the attorney-client confidentiality provisions of the Business and Professions Code. It is the city council as a whole that holds the privilege. And as I've indicated in the past, whether it's that or releasing confidential communications from closed session, it is the council that holds the privilege. The council is an entity, not individual council members.
What if I release that to the public? Is that like violating closed session?
Technically, again, it's not a violation of... Closed session has very specific provisions in the Brown Act relative to confidentiality. The attorney-client privilege is in the Business and Professions Code, as probably well-known, and the canons of ethics relate to the attorney-client privilege in the public sector as applying to the council as a whole. I don't believe there's a remedy, quote-unquote, for an individual council member releasing that. However, it certainly could be the subject of debate and discussion and possible censure, but I'm... One, I'm not... Would never tread into that area and suggest it, just to point out that the client, for the purposes of the attorney-client privilege, when it comes to...
Is the council.
Government, is the council as an entity.
Thank you. Next speaker is Mr. Harut DeMergen and Hossam.
And Hasmic Demirjan.
I'm Harut Demirjan, and those are the barricades that we've been talking about in past few weeks, few months. That's what we see right off the, right when we're coming out of our driveway. Oh, as a matter of fact, that post is no longer there. It's been moved to the other side of the street, because it got hit a few times with cars passing by. We've been collecting side mirrors and things from the street. Anyway, so it's to the next other side. And every time we're going out of the house, we have to think about how to get in, which way to go, which way to come. When the kids are leaving the house, we have to worry, we have to look from the window, is, are they safe with that 13-feet maneuvering thing? The street is 26 feet overall. Now we have only 13 feet left there. That's how it is when cars are coming from Pasadena. That's what you see. I was standing right in the middle of the road, and shooting pictures. It's safe, don't worry. That's how wide it is at the intersection, where teenagers comes at, during the day, night, in the morning, anytime. They do donuts, they, you know, they turn their cars around, and Mr. Zahn has some pictures of that. And that's been a year that we presented those pictures, and nothing happened. That's, again, you could see that sign from my house, that's an old sign, as a matter of fact, again. No parking signs, or no stopping signs, anytime. It worries me to cross the street sometimes. It says, don't, you know, don't stop. And why is it that we have eight signs in 200 feet, where we have only two speed limit signs? On each side of Linda Vista, way down from Chevy Chase, all the way to my house, there's only two speed limit signs, but yet we have... This is how it looks when people coming from Pasadena, we call it Jewel City, let's keep it Jewel City, let's remove that, those barricades, it looks like trash being built up there. Oh, there was, there was a cyclist, what happened to him? Let's see. No, no. Oh, oh, that's another picture. I'm just joking. A truck, and remember, there are a lot of bicyclers on that road, and, you know, let's see. The sign is there again, the other side now, and it's got, it seems like it got hit again, and the one-way sign is moved. It's been a month that way, probably a month.
How did you catch the picture?
That's the same picture, I guess, no?
Okay.
Okay, so this is what we're talking about, and 80 feet-long barricade for someone not to make a left turn maneuvering, and it's unbelievable. What city could do for a one-single family? Is that the only thing that could be done, if there is any kind of, anyway, that's a truck that's working or repairing, I think, one of those blocks, the parking block that got hit by a car or something? And they're right in the middle of the road, cars, I don't know if they could pass by, if it's a small car, probably can. And there, I don't think they're feeling of danger or anything. That's, again, another picture, and there's a car passing by there, probably is halfway on the road, on the dirt. 8:15 in the morning. That's another picture. No flagman, and they can work, look at the cyclists there. Look at that picture. And what safety are we talking about? Who's safety? I mean, this isn't safety issue. And next, please. Now, the bicyclers are a little further, and there's a car trying to pass the bicyclist, next, and he does pass, but he crosses the yellow line in the middle, but, you know, way, where it's a lot more dangerous than right in front of my driveway. Now, when my truck is parked on my driveway, my neighbors don't have my sight vision.
Thank you. We can turn it over to Hasmic Demirjan.
I was gonna do another, I'm sorry, my name is Hasmic Demirjan. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council member, staff. I'll continue, I was gonna do another presentation, but I'll continue this one. This is, again, the Public Works employees working, you know, if it's dangerous, how could, you know, work there, you know? And then this is, again, in the middle of a street, doing repairs. And this is, this was in the middle of the street. This is our view of day and night, you know? What a wonderful view we have, you know? What kind of retaliation is this? Again, more, I mean, you guys turned that section to a trash, I'm sorry to say this. Is this a Jewel City, or a trash area? If you guys don't care about that area, you know, just give it to some, another city, you know? Maybe they could treat us better, you know? This is, again, from, in front of our property to Pasadena. Again, this is the car coming from Pasadena, and my husband is in the middle of the street, and there's no problem. More trash stuff. Again, car passing, I don't know what was, but, you know, but, oh, okay. And this is our view at night. I'd like to ask this answer, how, you know, what you, how you would feel if this was in front of your property? Just think about it, just think that, you know, you're... Mr. Mayor, you requested last time, the history, okay? I'm providing you letters, communications, between Ferrocks Community Home and Associations, and city officials, okay? Lot of interdepartmental letters. Hopefully, it would shed some light, you know, this, along with the video, and I'm sure there are more communications that we're not aware of it, or, you know, maybe the city attorney can provide you the file, its statistic, and maybe, you know, there are, I'm sure there are a lot of other email communications that we're not aware of it. And let's put an end to this confusion between various departments. I was just looking, a couple days ago, one of the letters, Tom Mitchell, in his email communication, mentions that it was a zoning condition. Mr. Zahn, you thought when we had a meeting with you, it was a council's condition. Mr. City Attorney, you thought it was a condition under conditional use permit. Okay, let's, let's just, it's incredible. Let's go, it was none of those. There's a staff report dated September 24, 2002. It says it was requested from the applicant, not required, it was a proposal. And if you watch the video, September 24, you see Mr. Roger Kiesel, you know, he makes a presentation, and it says it was requested from the applicant. It was a proposal, and we rejected it, okay? And this shouldn't even come out, this proposal, long before we submit our plan to the Plan Check Process, okay? Investigation needs to be done, to see who was behind all this corruption. Enough is enough. Let's finish what he said, she said, okay? And let's put an end to this. Just remove it, okay? We don't want any agenda, nothing, just remove it. Just treat us fair and equal, just like anybody else, you know, any other resident in the city, okay? Let's have our quiet enjoyment, our home. And, you know, next week, it's gonna be one year, you know, it's December 5th, since Public Works placed it. Just remove it before that, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Starbird, we have a date as to when this is coming before us.
It's on your term of calendar for January 8.
January 8, thank you. The next speaker is Margaret Hammond.
Good evening, once again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city staff and audience. My name is Margaret Hammond. Gee, that secret meeting, and I heard sexual misconduct. Wow. Does Darlene know about all this?
Yeah, right here.
We're in trouble. Darlene's a friend of mine, I'm sure she knows better. As though does everybody else. Hey, we gotta laugh at these things, what else can we do? And I, you know, why do people want to move to Glendale? One of the reasons is we have a lot of jewels that we polish and look after. Of course, the Glendale, the Doctor's House, the Casa Dobby, and one of the main things is the school district. You'll hear people over and over, wanna move here because of our schools. And I, myself, I'm here, and I'm standing up for the officials of the Glendale Unified District. How many of you, here and out there, went to Glendale High School? And your parents went there, and your children are attending now. So, and this is, does, not the largest part of our real estate taxes go for school funding? So, we are happy to pay this huge amount of, for our education. It's a huge chunk of our real estate taxes go, the majority for schooling. And our citizens feel that it's worthwhile, because it adds to our, the citizens of our country, and makes us the greatest country in the world. Why? Our educational system in America. And here in Glendale, we have a fabulous one. And it's free to all citizens, legal, illegal, and of all nationalities, and ethnic and religious groups. But education is not just a matter of reading, writing, and arithmetic, it is providing facilities, so that the perimeter of the total growth of the student is expanded, to include the physical and social growth. This would include football, basketball, soccer, tennis, et cetera, et cetera, on and on. And for the parents of those students, to enjoy our facilities. And after all, Moise Field, that was why it was built. We thought it was a wonderful addition to our city, and to encourage our young people. Would you rather have them standing on the corner, buying and selling drugs, or doing whatever? They're far better to be at games than at the school, aren't they? So, we need to keep on, have those opportunities open to everybody, and not have people that feel that they own a particular part of the city, and should restrict the use of those facilities. That's not right at all, especially in Glendale High School, which is in the southern part of Glendale. A very important facility for the people in this area of Glendale. And we're proud of that school. It's added a lot to our community over the years. So, we need to feel that it is not just for our part of the city, the whole community benefits from that. I mean, the whole community uses that field. Now, I know that the city council does not control the events at the school, and has jurisdiction of the streets around the school, but you must have had an agreement, when that school has been using that facility for 100 years, there has always been an understanding, it's necessary to get the students there, get the parents there, do all the events and so forth, there has to be a way for them to get in there, doesn't there? So naturally, we feel that we have a right to use the streets around the school, I do, as a taxpayer, that if I'm going to that high school, I have a right to use the streets around that school. That's what I pay my tax dollars for. And it is one of the jewels of our city. Our school system is one of our greatest assets. It is one of our greatest jewels of the city. And that's the way I feel about it. And just remember that it's our taxes that pay for the advantages that we want to give to our young people, of all ethnic, religious, and political beliefs. Hooray for our Glendale Board of Education. Thank you very much. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Margaret. The next speakers are, or is it Estee and Lucy, or Estee and Lucy?
That's Estee and Lucy, Mayor.
Estee and Lucy. Please state your names.
Good evening, Mayor, and council members, and staff, and the public. My name is Estee Estreller, and this is Lucy Pogosian. We're owners of a condo at 570 West Stocker Avenue. And then when we bought a property recently, mine was in April of 2006, hers was October 2006. Then we received letters eventually from the building safety, saying that we have that remodeling made on the loft area. So I took action March of '07, I got the letter in November of '06. So I went to the city, I spoke with several architects about the situation, about four or five of them. I communicated with the city building safety, come up with a plan, but they said it's burned, that there's no plans to go, to refer to. And then, then I got an architect to come out, draw with the plans, and then we presented it October, and then we went to the building safety again, and then, then we went to the planning section, and said that, before you even do anything, maybe we wanna know if we need a parking exemption permit, something like that. And then, so, I went to a dead end, so we felt that, maybe we have to come to the city council and present the situation. And in our HOA meeting a month ago, Lucy and then maybe about six other condo owners have the same problems, but we're dealing this individually, so we said, maybe you wanna come here and present the situation, and Lucy has something to say about her unit.
When I came to the city, they said it's violation been since 1978. Just my question is, if it's already 30 years, almost, since was violation on that unit, why I have to pay price for that? So I purchased that unit with the loft, it was already existing, so why I have to pay price for that? I have to now get a permit, which is even impossible to get a permit, or so, that's what my question.
Okay. 570 West Stocker Avenue. Yeah, if, if, maybe all of us...
311.
Mine is 312. And we don't know what to do from here on.
Thank you. Staff has the address, and someone will look at it, and hopefully...
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we'll check it out first thing tomorrow, and see what the situation is, and communicate with the individuals. I don't know what the situation is. I've got the 570 West Stocker, do we have your telephone number? Don't give it to us here, just, Artie, would you make sure we have it on the card here? Okay. Is there a telephone number?
Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Dick Sealy. The last speaker will be Harry Zallos.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I don't know, after listening to all the conversation about the Bill of Rights and Constitution back, I'm not too sure I should be here talking about what I'm gonna talk about, but I will anyway. On December 15, 1791, the date of my birth, the first 10 amendments to the United States Constitution, called the Bill of Rights, were ratified by three-fourths of the states existing at that time. In 1941, 150 years after the ratification of those Bill of Rights, Franklin Roosevelt proclaimed December 15 as a National Day of, I'm sorry, National Bill of Rights Day. Since then, several cities and some states have created resolutions, declaring December 15 as Bill of Rights Day, some mandating that it be so declared each and every year. In addition, many of those resolutions required that a copy of the Bill of Rights be posted in a prominent place in City Hall. Our Constitution, especially the Bill of Rights, which now contains 27 amendments, are, in my view, the two most important documents ever written by man in the history of the world. My request today for you, at the pleasure of the city attorney, is to formulate a resolution for the city of Glendale honoring each and every December 15 as Bill of Rights Day. I'd attach resolutions from a state and two cities, to make Scott's job a bit easier, and hopefully you can create and pass a resolution this, coming, before this, coming December 15, as well as post a copy of the Bill of Rights here in City Hall. 15th, as well as post a copy of the Bill of Rights here in the City Hall. Thank you.
It's for. Thank you, Mr. Sealy.
I agree. I agree, Mr. Sealy, a very good idea. I propose that we do just that.
I second that. Good. I'm hopeful that we can have something out. It's not.
We may have some debate before it's passed, but, I say, we may have some debate before it's passed.
Oh, yes, I'm sure we will, yeah, that's for sure. Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Sealy, may I make a recommendation that you go to the school board and also ask them to post the Bill of Rights for that two weeks in the schools?
Okay. I'll buy that. Good suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. The last speaker is Harry Zavos.
Counsel, my name is Harry Zavos. I'm a resident of Glendale. I want to assure the council I'm here to calm waters, not to stir them up, and anything I have to say is not intended to point the finger at any individual on this side or the other side of the podium. And when I decided to make those remarks, I did not realize how apt they would be given remarks that have preceded me. I am a firm believer in the First Amendment and the marketplace of ideas which it serves and which is a cornerstone of our form of government. That marketplace of ideas holds, that idea gains acceptance by competing freely in open debate with competing ideas and emerging with the assent of the majority, not that it prevails because the competing ideas are suppressed. I also believe that a healthy marketplace of ideas requires us to responsibly speak about ideas and to focus on their content and not on hominum attacks or suspicions of what motivated the remarks. Now, in my private life and among my friends, I do speculate about people's motivations. And I do maybe make some statements about what I think of them. But I try carefully, for the most part, to keep those considerations out of public debate. I don't think they have a place there. I don't think they advance it. Finally, I think a marketplace of ideas functions best when there isn't a sense that if somebody disagrees with us about public issues, that we must be vindictive against them. It seems to me that all of us, in disagreeing about various issues that affect the city or the nation, do it because we have the best interests of the public at heart. And we ought to accept that as a given on the part of people who disagree with us until we're proven otherwise. Now, in our public debate, I think there is a virus that threatens the marketplace of ideas. And some of its more virulent symptoms are in things like, particularly at the national level, the politics of personal destruction. Or if you disagree with me on a given issue, you're part of the enemy. Or if I have it within my power, I am going to intimidate and suppress ideas which are different than mine. Now, I hope I'm wrong, but I have sensed that that virus may be attempting to infect city politics. And if I am right, I think it is important for us to inoculate ourselves against that virus by reminding ourselves that disagreement is healthy. And that when people disagree with us, or we disagree with them, when we disagree, our comments should not carry the air of vindictiveness or possible retaliation in the offing. If I am wrong about my sense about the coming of that virus, I think my comments can do no harm. But if I'm right, I want to raise my voice to say we should head it off. And given some comments that have been made here since I prepared these remarks, I think I have to make one, I have a little less than a minute, one quick statement. I think it behooves all of us to remind ourselves that the First Amendment is not there to protect conventional wisdom, popular ideas, or speech which comports with what is considered good standards of decorum. The First Amendment rises in greater importance the more radical the idea is, the more vile its expression is, and the more challenging it is to convention. And that's been demonstrated in several cases. One of the ones that sticks with me is the Skokie case, where Nazis wanted a permit to parade through Skokie, where much of its population consisted of survivors from the Holocaust. And guess what? The city couldn't prevent it because it was violative of the First Amendment, as vile as it was. And the ACLU lawyer who represented the Nazi Party, and Mr. Graeme, who got an award for the ACLU, and correct me if I'm wrong, was a Jewish lawyer. The burning of the flag, vile as it is, is protected. And I think even Mr. Howard indicated that vile language cannot be suppressed in a public meeting unless it is accompanied by disruption, and disruption cannot be equated to the fact that the language offends anybody. And I would hope we would keep that foremost in our mind. And I hope we would go forward, all being citizens of this city, and being able to disagree at the same time, not put those people who disagree with us in the enemy's camp.
Thank you, Mr. Zavos. Item seven, Mr. Kusakian.
Adoption of ordinances. 7A is an urgency ordinance establishing an interim procedure for the Planning Commission to assume the authority and duties of the Board of Zoning Appeals until the Board of Zoning Appeals consists of five members or until the effective date of an ordinance modifying the approval authority of Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals, whichever occurs first. This was offered on November 20th, 2007 by Councilmember Weaver.
Mr. Yusefian.
Before Mr. Weaver moves on the ordinance, I think the section that, on the second page of the resolution, it says Section 2, says interim authority of the duties of the adoption of this interim measure will establish an interim authority and duties for the Planning Commission to consider appeal of zoning administrator and the zoning hearing officer decision until the Board of Zoning Appeals consists of five members or subsequent ordinance merging the duties of the functions of the board. I thought that we had made a decision on a majority that we were going to try this out for about a year. So I do not see that language in here for the period of one year. So could somebody explain to me what I'm missing?
Sure. Mr. Garcia.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Yusefian. The way that the ordinance is prepared is so that the council can at any time make the motion either to permanently merge the two commissions or to appoint five members to the BZA. The second motion that was adopted last week was to direct staff in a year to come back with the status report that would allow the council to either permanently merge the two, or if the council decided not to merge the two, the council could at that time make appointments to the BZA to make it a five-member commission again, and then it would take full duty. So the effect of the ordinance will be that it, the duties will transfer over to the Planning Commission, and those duties will remain with the Planning Commission until such time the council either adopts an ordinance permanently merging the two, or the council appoints five members to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
My concern with this is that currently, the mayor has appointed one person, and I have another one. And if a third council member decides to appoint a third one, all of a sudden, we have a problem. Now we have a majority, and this gets into trouble.
Sure. Remember that individual council members nominate members to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and that takes a majority action of the council. So if the council decides to actually appoint those members, five members, it's not, it's not three members, it's all five members, at that point, the council will be, in essence, changing its mind and creating the Board of Zoning Appeals again. And in effect, the temporary ordinance would no longer have effect. So essentially, it's going to take a majority of the action of the council to.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that this was not contrary to what we had done.
And I've informed my appointee, Mr. Crisp. He probably has had the shortest reign of a commissioner. He appeared for one meeting. I thank his diligence in appearing and participating. But I did inform him that as a result of this, should this ordinance pass, likely it will, that we won't be needing his services for several months, at which time I hope to appoint him to the new Planning Commission. Mr. Quintero.
How is that going to work in terms of someone who's currently on the BZA, like this new member? Does he rotate onto the Planning Commission?
No. He's out.
Yep. You'll actually have to appoint any individual you want to serve on the Planning Commission, assuming there's a vacancy, is you will have to appoint that individual to the Planning Commission. Right now, this ordinance just transfers the duties, not the membership.
I'd like to move 7A.
Second. Mr. Quintero.
Okay, as I mentioned last week, I'll be voting against this. I don't think it's a good idea. I think the Planning Commission has duties that sort of pertain to strategic visions and general plans, et cetera. The BZA, to me, is a very focused board, having to work with conditional use permits, variances, et cetera, and I don't think merging the two is a good idea. As a matter of fact, I watched what may have been a rerun of the BZA last night as they debated Pennerton. And your appointee did a very good job, I thought, Mr. Najarian. But at any rate, he was very detailed, very focused, and I just don't see how one board should do both. So anyway, I'll vote against it.
Thank you, Mr. Quintero. If there's nothing else, we'll take roll call.
Councilmembers, Graeme.
Yes.
Quintero.
No.
Weaver.
Hi.
Yusefian.
Hi.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes.
Next item, please.
At 7B is a resolution adopting legislative findings of facts supporting amendments and changes to the California Standards Code as contained in the Glendale Building and Safety Code 2008. B1 is an ordinance adopting the 2007 California Building Code as Volume 1, 2007 California Plumbing Code as Volume 2, the 2007 California Mechanical Code as Volume 3, the 2007 California Electrical Code as Volume 4, the 1997 Uniform Housing Code as Volume 5, the 2007 California Fire Code as Volume 6, the Glendale Security Code as Volume 7, and the Glendale Commercial and Industrial Property Maintenance Code as Volume 8, all of which comprise the Building and Safety Code of the City of Glendale 2008. This was offered on November 13th, 2007 by Councilmember Quintero.
I'll move the resolution at 7B1.
Second.
The ordinance at 7B1.
There's no further discussion. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Graeme.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Yusefian.
Hi.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes.
Next item.
Eight, moving to action items. The first item at 8A is Chief of Police Regarding Police Fees Update. At 8A1 is a resolution approving updated police fees including automatic annual inflation. And 8A2 is ordinance for introduction, including automatic annual inflation adjustment.
I have two cards, one from Barry Allen, one from Herbert Milano. Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council staff, and of course, the public, I'm Barry Allen. I have no problem with raising fees, but the question that I have is, what is the definition of a false alarm? Having been in the alarm business for many years, being responsible for 100,000 dwellings and buildings and commercials and for life and limb and property, I understand what a false alarm is. And my question is, does the city have a definition? You know, there's more than once that the brick went through the window, and the police responded and said it was a brick through the window, it's a false alarm. And then two hours later, the burglars came back and cleaned out the drugstore. We've seen this many, many times. So the question is, what is a false alarm? Is it one where we don't catch anyone? Or is it one where there was consumer error? There are a lot of, a lot of things. And when I read the number of false alarms that the cities had, that's an astronomical number. And it's apparently one that requires some education. Because we don't want to lose the benefit of alarms, but we do want to lose, we do want to correct those that may be installed improperly, or the people that are operating don't know how to operate them. So I think we need to look at that, and we need to really analyze the types of, quote, "false alarms." Thank you. I'm Barry Allen.
Thank you. Mr. Howard, do we have a definition of false alarm?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we do. It's pretty lengthy, and it's in Section 812020 definitions under our Emergency Alarm Systems Ordinance. I could read it, but it's fairly lengthy. It's actually under definition, easily means the act of, again, I don't know if you want me to read it, but we do have.
Okay. Is it specific?
Very, as I indicate, it's very lengthy. It actually contains two parts.
Can we give the site to Mr. Allen?
Yes. Municipal Code, Section 812.020 definitions. The definitions are all alphabetical, so it's under F.
Mr. Yusefian.
I'd like to have somebody from Police Department who's itching to get up in here and answer that question.
Jay Kreitz, our business administrator for the Police Department.
So for us regular people who don't read definitions, could you tell us what a false alarm is?
Yes, Mr. Yusefian. We try and be very lenient, if you will, with an alarm owner. In the instance or the example that Mr. Allen gave, if we got to a home or to a commercial establishment and found that a brick had gone through a window, that would not be considered a false alarm. The person would not be charged for the alarm. That's obviously, the alarm was functioning as it was supposed to. What we're trying to eliminate or reduce are these alarms where someone goes out the front door and forgets to turn the alarm off, and we send police out to their home. Nearly $700,000 in lost time for police officers each year is wasted, so to speak, in them going out and answering false alarms. It takes police off the street. Our goal with this change in the ordinance is to reduce those number of alarms. We, in our office, each time we talk with people about alarms, we are educating. We want them to go to their alarm company, find out why there are malfunctions. The whole goal here is to record those individuals that do not have false alarms, and those that have reoccurring false alarms and continually are getting our police called to their establishments, those are the people that we're trying to nudge into getting their repairs via the higher alarms.
Okay. Before you take this out on the road and test drive it, I want to make sure, with the experience we had with the trees, are you going to send this 5,700 people some kind of a letter?
Absolutely.
Informing them, these are the new rules.
Absolutely.
I don't want them on KFI screaming that they got a $10,000 fine.
Absolutely. There'll be a cooling off period everywhere. We will notify each and every one that has alarms. Obviously, some, if people do not have an alarm permit with us, and there are a few, although we're getting most of these converted over to having permits, you know, we can put something maybe in the news press, but all alarm permit owners will definitely be notified.
That's amazing. There's 1,000 of them, according to the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Milano is next.
My name is Herbert Milano, Mayor Najarian, and members of the city council, city staff. I am not going to speak in any way derogatorily with regard to any of these fees. I think they're justified as the Police Department now aims to control some of their expenses. I think it's a, it's a wonderful approach to good governance. But I do want to relate a, an incident that I had. I had my car parked at a restaurant nearby, and an elderly gentleman lost control of his automobile and smashed into my car. The police, without my knowing, arrived, took care of the problem, and then looked for me inside the restaurant to find me. I mean, the police really reacted very professionally, above and beyond the call of duty. Then I needed a police report. $15 is not a lot of money, but I wonder what $15 pays for? Does it pay for next-day service, two-day service, three-day service, one week? And I wonder if we ever give, let's say, performance objectives with regard to the different fees that we charge the public? Just like I am trying to promote, that we have performance objectives to pretty much all of the activities that the Police Department generally do. It is one of the things that is continually missing with regard to the tie-in between It is one of the things that is continually missing with regard to the tie-in between salaries and increases in pay. I'd like to see a month where, you know, we get a full scope and full reporting from the Police Department with regard to false alarms issues, with regard to youth crime, with regard to traffic issues, because I think that performance objectives allows us to appreciate more the efforts that the Police Department has to go through, and also let us know how well they use our funds and what the general public's expectation is with regard to service. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Howard, in the resolution, page 2, and Mr. Milano references the $15 fee for traffic accident reports. Page 2 references no charge. Would that be $15? I know that they do charge $15 for such reports.
I honestly don't know. Maybe Mr. Kreitz knows if that's an error or something else. We're looking at firearms permit fees and burglar alarm increase in fees, so I'm not certain. That was intended to be no charge.
Can you address this point, or do you need to get back to us?
I would need to get it back again. That's right, I'll do that right away.
Okay.
Well, maybe we should hold the item.
I think it's on response report fees, it says possession report fees is $15. Is that different?
My concern is that they were using an old ordinance, and that isn't a fee that's changing, but they might not have been using an up-to-date ordinance. Let me suggest we hold this.
Let's double-check those fees and make sure.
Let's hold this meeting.
My recommendation is good cash.
Yeah, let's hold this and double-check.
And also, when the staff report comes back, could you tell us on the second section, which is the ordinance for introduction, automatic annual inflation? What does it say in here what this percentage is?
It would be based on, the way it was written, I believe, was based on the CPI index.
Okay, because I don't see that.
It's in the, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilman Yusefian, it's actually page 1 of the ordinance at 8A1, subsection B, large B, small 2.
Yeah, very specific.
Consumer Price Index for All Urban Consumers, CPIU for Los Angeles, Orange County, Riverside Metropolitan Area, published by the Bureau of Labor Statistics, if published, not another similar index would be used. It's about three-quarters of the way down the page, on the first page of the ordinance.
So can we, do we need to hold off on introducing the ordinance since it refers to the resolution?
You can introduce the, and actually, you could introduce the ordinance, and we can have hopefully the information back by next week, and then if satisfactory, we can have the resolution adopted that day.
Mr. Weaver.
I'll introduce the ordinance at 8A2.
Thank you, and you'll be back with the correct, double-check the correct figures. Mr. Howard?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I err not catching this. At 7B, there is a resolution, I think Councilman Quintero mentioned it, and I quickly jumped in and said ordinance, there is an ordinance there as well. You adopted the ordinance, but not the resolution. I need to recommend you go back and consider 7B, the resolution.
I'll move 7B.
Second. Do we have to read that?
Yeah, it's been read into the record, but for purposes of making sure that the record reflects properly what you're acting on, and the public has an opportunity to speak on it should they desire to do so, that should note that it is, going back to 7B, the resolution adopting legislative findings of facts supporting amendments and changes to the California Standards Code as contained in the Glendale Building and Safety Code 2008.
Okay. Mr. Weaver made the motion.
And there was a second.
And there was a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Drayman.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Yusefian.
Hi.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes.
Okay. The next item, please.
At 8B is interim director of Glendale Water and Power regarding Chevy Chase 968 Reservoir and Pump Station Replacement, Plan Number 4398E, Spec. Number 3224. At B1 is a motion awarding a construction contract to SEMA Construction, Inc., in an amount of $21,146,215 and 39 cents, and directing the city clerk to reject all other bids.
This was a low bid, and I do have a card by Mr. Boss.
Name's Kenneth Boss. I lived here 2910 Grace Line Way, about 47 years. So I'm pretty familiar with the canyon, and as such, there's a, oh, by the way, has everybody got a copy of, or know what's in this proposal?
What are you referring to, Mr. Boss?
This is the proposal you just talked about.
But what are you holding?
Oh, this is the Chevy Chase Reservoir in replacement.
That's a spex.
Nobody's, is that it?
Go ahead, Mr. Boss, and you can comment on that.
Well, seeing as I've lived up there for so long, I figured that, and I've been to the last three meetings of the people from Glendale Water and Power, and the last meeting, Peter Cavanas asked a few questions, we had the meeting down at the Chevy Chase Club, and in the course of the evening, I talked to the engineers that have been doing the pick and shovel work, so to speak. But by the time the end of that, when those meetings were over, I just said, you know what? This thing has been settled, and this is only a draft, and as such, I had no problems with as far as the reservoir itself goes, but it's the traffic and transportation. People in Glen Oaks got together a few years back, and they said to the city, we don't want all those trash trucks going up Glen Oaks, and there's too much traffic, and we don't want to have it. So the city council said, okay, we'll go around the other route, and that is the easy way out for which the proposal is written here. And I left a copy of the transportation and traffic there with two Xerox copies of a counterproposal that I think would save a lot of traffic problems, a lot of legal suits, a lot of accidents, and that's one of these two copies that I have here. And it's also an integral part of the proposal that was made, and so in connection with what I wanted to submit and save quite a few, a lot of money, I also checked with our fire department in our local area here. I found out that there's a lot of fire roads that are off of Figueroa. Well, the amount of traffic that's going down Chevy Chase versus going up Linda Vista to Figueroa to the fire roads that end up right at the back end of where the Glen Oaks and the landfill is. And not only do I know that there's a road that gets there, because I walked all over the place to make sure it was there, and when I suggested to one of the engineers at the city that I measured on my tape, and the narrowest road is 10 and 1/2 feet, and his reply is, well...
Please conclude, Mr. Boss.
We can't take all those curves up there with 10 and 1/2 feet with 20-ton truck. And I said, well, why don't you use a smaller truck? And he said, well, there's more traveling with shorter trucks. And I said, well, how are you going to equate that?
Thank you, Mr. Boss.
To the difference, and if that map is, and this is right out of the book here, and if you look at that map, you can readily see what I proposed to one up Linda Vista, which only has maybe five or six cars on that street, because I go there all the time, I live in the area. And not only did I mention it, our...
Mr. Boss, your time is up. I hate to tell you that.
Goodness.
I understand your points about the traffic flow on Chevy Chase and perhaps requesting a separate direction for it to enter the construction site.
Well, I have some really important factors here that...
Thank you, Mr. Boss. Okay. Is there any discussion on this item? This is for the bid amount of $21,146,215 and 39 cents. Mr. Yusefian.
The book that Mr. Boss showed, what was that book?
Mr. Mayor, let me see, you're looking at Steve's there. Let me suggest Peter Cavunas, Water Service Administrator with GWP. Explain that to you. It's okay, I do the same thing. I'm always attributing GWP to Public Works. Peter, if you would, please.
Specifications.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Steve gets the good and bad.
I know, he gets everything. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Peter Cavunas, Water Services Administrator. The book that Mr. Boss was referring to was the mitigated negative declaration for the project. The book was stamped draft. It is what the council approved well over a year ago, and that is the version that became final.
Peter, the construction hall, I know you've had a meeting at Chevy Chase with residents about the proposed traffic plan. Can you comment very quickly on it?
Very quickly, this is a traffic plan that's been proposed by the city, and actually, we also brought the Police Department with us to assure the residents that we would have police presence to enforce that traffic plan on the city's contractor, and that all conditions will be abided by.
Was the alternative that Mr. Boss suggested evaluated?
It was evaluated, and it's really not feasible. It would perhaps make a little more sense if we had a lot of material going to Shoal Canyon landfill, but in this particular project, we're not taking material to Shoal Canyon landfill. And even at that, we'd have to have extensive trucks that are not made for it go over dirt roads to get into Shoal Canyon landfill, go up Linda Vista, and essentially, the traffic's the same, it's just a question of where it goes.
Where are we taking it?
The concrete that's getting hauled away would go to wherever the proper recycling center is for concrete.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Weaver.
Move 8C1 and 2.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Drayman.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Yusefian.
Second.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item, please.
At C is interim director of Glendale Water and Power regarding resolutions of intent to reimburse certain expenditures from proceeds of proposed tax-exempt financing. At C1 is resolution declaring the intention to reimburse certain expenditures for various capital improvements to the electric system. And at 8C2 is a resolution declaring the intention to reimburse certain expenditures for various capital improvements to the water system.
I have a card from Herbert Milano. Mr. Milano.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, members of the city council and city staff. My name is Herbert Milano. If my understanding is correct, this particular council action before you will, in a way, pave the way for the approval of prior capital expenditure commitments to a future bond issue. And it seems to me that what I have read continually in the summary of the budgets as an introductory, says that our goal, or the goal of the city, is to basically fund capital expenditures on a pay-as-we-go basis. Here, I think, we're saying, let's fund these particular capital expenditures, and then in the future, come around and say, well, then let's issue a bond to cover it. I'm not necessarily against the particular needs of the GWP in this case, but I am concerned that for the past 10 years, $120 million from 2000 through 2006 have been transferred from GWP over to the general fund, continually. And what is of significant concern to me is that the major cause, as it appears from the documents I gave you earlier, are an incredible number of salary increases that have taken place during the same period of time. So if we continue to, in the world of this incredible salary increases, and not control it, and continue to transfer the funds from our infrastructure for utility and water, I think that it is an unjust thing for our children and those individuals who come into the future, who eventually have to pay for those bonds, for basically the privilege of giving our city staff and the GMA, they're requested salary increases. It's $120 million, not counting, these years. Please take a look at the documents that I handed to you, because I think this is a very troubling trend that we have. Salary increases for many members of the GMA going up 40% in those six years. One in particular went up 68% for the same position from 2001 to 2006. And I think that we're funding it by basically taking money away from our infrastructure. And I don't think this is the right way of governance. I think that we owe it to be frugal and judicious with the way we fund our infrastructure. It should be ongoing. I keep looking at the documents the city provides, looking for what are the trends? How much is allocated every year to every department, whether it's public works, roads, sewers, and so on? And I've yet to see one document that gives you the whole trend at a glance, and another one that gives us the objectives, the outcomes with regard to what we're going to do with that money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Milano.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Weaver.
Move 8C1 and 2.
Second. Mr. Yusefian.
I would be voting against this. While I was in Kansas City, there was another document that came to this city. I think, as I watched the videotape, Mr. Najarian left the room, and the same item that was turned down two weeks prior, and that was to hire a bond council, and this council had turned it down on a 3 to 2 vote. The same item came back, and I guess some of my colleagues have forgotten about it, and they voted for the hiring of the bond council. The issue with this particular thing is not that we don't need some of the improvements or using a bond is an inappropriate way of doing this. We did go to bond to build Unit 9, which has been working very well for us. My problem is, we put the cart before the horse, and this is what's happening. We're basically walking down the path before this council has approved a resolution or given direction to staff that it's okay to issue a $50 million bond or a $60 million bond, and how it's going to be paid for. Folks, it's going to be paid for by you, by me, the rate payers. They're talking about increasing the electric and the water rates, and over several years, it's going to be huge. Now, we did not discuss this in here. We haven't reached to that point, whether or not 50 is the right number, 60 is the right number, 80 is the right number? We don't know. The staff continually keeps moving in a direction of, we're going to want $60 million for the bond for the issue of electric and 50 million for the water. So now, we're going to go out there and say, let's transfer the money, we can start the projects, so you basically are stuck on the project, and then they come back and say, well, now we have to have the bond because we have started a project, you have to pay for it. And as I said, it's not that I think the project shouldn't happen, but in my business as a general contractor, I'm telling you one thing, I never go to a customer and say, let me start the job, then I'll tell you how much you're going to need to pay me. And if you see a contractor like that, you run away from him, because it's going to cost you an arm and leg. You always want to know what the cost is, then you agree with it, then you move in that direction, you go borrow the money, and you take care of it. That's the issue that I'm having with this particular item, is saying, well, we're going to assume that this council is going to vote to approve the bonds. How do they know? How do they know? So I won't be voting for it.
Mr. Starbitt, how, in the areas of municipal finance, what is the standard, the custom and practice in spending large sums of money with relation to potential bond funds?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, relative to these types of bonds, the resolution would allow, if the council does at some point approve public financing, to then use those proceeds for any of the expenditures that may be incurred between the adoption of the resolution and the issuance of the bonds.
the issuance of the bonds. You could decide not to issue bonds, you could decide to incorporate those improvements or capital projects into your existing budget in some form, and in effect, not sell bonds. But if you do, you have to have what I call an inducement resolution to allow you to cover those costs that you may have incurred prior to the issuance of the bonds. I will note that the issue of water rates is on an upcoming agenda here before the end of the year, in addition to the electric rates as well. So the costs that are going to be incurred between now and when you'll be looking at your overall picture for rates is not, is not large, and in fact, there's a relatively short timeframe between now and then. But you do have to have one of these resolutions to incur any costs that might happen before the actual issuance of the bonds, which even with your approval, could be sometime well after the first of the year, and you're going to be incurring costs between now and then.
And why can't we, why can't we do this after we approve those bonds?
Peter, can you help out here in terms of the timing?
What are we talking, as far as the amount is concerned? How much expense are we incurring?
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The city is not incurring any expense that the council itself would not approve. The utility would not embark on a project that the council would not approve. All those approvals come to you first. We're looking at projects that if the council were to approve, as Mr. Starbird said, the expenses between now and a time that the council will consider a bond would be possibly in the few hundreds of thousands of dollars, not in millions. As Mr. Starbird said, you have the flexibility to approve the bond up to sixty million for electric and up to fifty million for water. And that consideration would come to you, I believe, as early as December eleventh, your December eleventh meeting.
And how much, how much reserves do we have in the water and power account?
In the, I can speak to the water reserves, the reserves in the water account are about three-point-two million dollars compared to the city's approved targets.
And electric?
Electric.
It's ninety-nine million compared to one.
Okay, so you have ninety-nine million dollars there, three-point-six million dollars there, so we're talking about having something close to about a hundred and two million dollars in the bank. So if you're gonna incur two-hundred thousand, three-hundred thousand, million dollars over a three-year period, or over a three-month period, whether you incur it and you pay for it this way, then after the bond is issued, you can always pay it back, can't you?
Well, no, not necessarily. Mr. Mayor, if I can, let me just use an example. If, and I don't know the answer to this, so I'll ask. In awarding the bid this evening on the Chevy Chase reservoir, without this resolution, would we be able to recapture that cost from a subsequent bond issue?
We would not.
See, and that's, and that's the key. In awarding this bid, you, Scott, is more clarification?
It's IRS regulation, essentially treasurer regulation, that prohibits you from reaching back with bond proceeds to pay for projects that have currently been approved and have reached a point where you begin to expend funds on them. And that's the purpose of the resolutions here, is to be able to capture those bond monies and relate them back later. Otherwise, the IRS would disapprove.
So if I can, here's, here's a difficult position you'd find yourselves in. You could eventually decide that you don't wanna do a bond issue, in fact, you wanna find a different way to pay for the reservoir and do everything else you wanna do. But if you do make a decision to sell bonds, you will lose your ability to use those bonds for one of the most important projects the Water Fund has going, and one of the biggest ones, which would be the Chevy Chase reservoir, because you will have awarded the bid tonight to preserve what was a very good low bid. And without an inducement resolution, when you do sell bonds after the first of the year, you wouldn't be able to come back and cover that cost. Now, again, it preserves your flexibility to decide you don't wanna sell bonds, then we'll have to find some other way to fund the Chevy Chase reservoir, but if you do sell bonds, this lets you do that.
But this is not tying my hand.
Oh, absolutely not. No, absolutely not. None whatsoever. It actually increases your flexibility.
So long as it doesn't tie my hands.
Okay, any other questions on that? That's cleared up.
Well, one, one more. You made it, I seconded. One more, just to be clear, so that the public's clear. The fifty thousand for electrical and the sixty for water.
Million.
I mean, million.
A million.
For electrical and water. Those weren't pulled out of thin air. I mean, the staff has obviously projected what, okay, just wanted to make that clear. And then the second thing that's of interest to me on the previous Chevy Chase thing, I mean, it actually came in at fourteen percent. The contract came in at fourteen percent less than what you had anticipated. So that tells me that these future capital expenditures, we may in fact be paying less, and the sort of bloom is off the rose in terms of construction, and so I think we're gonna have more and more contracting companies responding to our RFPs.
Certainly been our experience. Three of the last three projects we've had have come in at, in this case, fourteen percent. We've had one come in at more than thirty percent less than the engineer's estimate prior year's prices, so it's a good time to do so.
And Mr. Mayor, you'll have the discussion of water rates on December four, electric rates on December eleven. And what you'll see in those presentations is that there has been a great deal of effort going into really picking through every single capital improvement item in both water and electrical, to pare it down to the absolute priorities that these gentlemen think are necessary in order to frankly, keep the bond issue as small as possible and to keep the pressure on our rates as low as possible. So you, I mean, you'll have a list of every single capital improvement item.
Okay. All right, so is everyone clear on the purpose of this motion? To reach back, should we decide to, to institute a bond? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Draymond.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Yusefian.
Aye.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. There was a motion to second. We had that. Next item, please.
At 8D is a city attorney regarding discussion of filling a vacancy for the city of Glendale on the Burbank-Glendale-Pacadena Airport Authority. At D1 is a motion appointing an elected official to serve the unexpired term of Commissioner Bob Yusefian. At D2 is a motion appointing an individual, non-elected official, to serve the unexpired term of Commissioner Yusefian. And at D3 is a motion directing staff.
Mr. Howard, do you have any report on this matter, or should we just get into it? I think it's.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's up to you. I think it's important to note that the motion to direct staff was really to direct staff, if you want to go out to a recruitment process. I've tried to provide as much flexibility to you tonight to either make a direct appointment of a council member, including any of the five up here, with the cautionary note regarding the FPPC regulation involving disqualification. Also, to appoint any other individual or to direct staff to either come back to you with a recruitment process, or you can utilize the example that I have attached from the recruitment process we utilized in nineteen ninety-nine.
I do have some cards, but I'd like to just make a short, short comment. I think that, that the process of appointing a permanent commissioner should be as open and transparent to the public as possible. I would support setting a date in the future, let's say, within thirty days or forty-five days, for the selection of a permanent member to serve on the commission. I would, however, feel that it's important to select an interim commissioner, so that commissioner can represent and fill out the entire voting block of the city of Glendale at the commission. And I understand that they will be voting on a selection of a president, and it would certainly help Glendale's cause to have a full voting contingency in that regard. I have several, I have one person in mind, I won't make that disclosure at this point, who is a non-elected official, who would not otherwise be interested in serving that seat. I think it would be only fair to any of those individuals seeking the appointment not to be named as the interim commissioner. That's my statement. I do have three cards, or with council, like.
I agree with you, Mr. Najarian, and my recommendation would be for Mr. Starbird to serve as an interim member of the airport authority until January. Yeah, he's done it before, that's right.
Is he qualified?
Will he provide the proper decorum? That's the only question. Let me, before we entertain a, a official motion on that, let me go to the public. Vache Mangasarian.
Good evening, I'm Vache Mangasarian. Sir Quintero, that was an excellent idea. I would not like to see any of you sitting on that commissioner's seat, especially Mr. Weaver, who's under criminal investigation. And.
Mr. Mangasarian, you don't have to go.
Mr. Najarian, and we asked, Mr. Allen asked you a question, and you didn't answer. You had a meeting with the three ladies and Mr. Howard regarding the airport commission issue, and you sort of dodged that question, didn't answer us. Why was that meeting? Because if you can remember, those three ladies were here bashing Mr. Yusefian with a special kind of written statement, which it wasn't coming out of their mouths. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Weaver.
I'd like Mr. Mangasarian to bring forth the evidence that I'm under criminal investigation. It'll be news to me, I'd like to see it. So bring it in, okay?
Okay. Well, let me respond, since Mr. Mangasarian and Mr. Allen are so intrigued as to what my prior meetings were. If you remember, back in May, perhaps, there was a decision to reappoint former councilman Manukian to the airport. However, during that council deliberation, we were notified of that FPPC conflict rule in which those councilmen who were interested in the position were required to step out of the room and not participate. And the discussion at that point was a legal discussion regarding the interpretation of that FPPC rule, and it ultimately resulted in a formal request being generated by the city attorney's office for a formal written ruling by the FPPC, which we're currently using today on, on current events. So it wasn't a secret meeting, we weren't deciding to place Margaret on the airport commission. You know, you guys are very concerned about it, but that's what it was all about. So will I be recusing myself? No, I won't be. Would you demand it? Well, you guys have some pretty vivid imaginations as to what happened, but that's, that's what occurred. The next speaker is Margaret Hammond.
This statement's coming out of my mouth. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff, and audience. Number one, as to the statement that was read by the three ladies, not skirts, I have the original document that was written by one of the ladies, and if anybody wants to see it, I would be very happy to give it. Nobody wrote what we had to say. That came from, we, one person, and we all, three of us approved of what was said. Thank you. And as to the private meeting, I didn't know it was private. Several people saw us going into the office. We weren't hiding under the desk or behind doors or anything. We walked into the city management openly and spoke about it afterwards. So there was no secret about it at all, whoever's trying to make it a secret. Thank you, I just wanna clarify that. I'm sorry it wasn't kind of a secret meeting between you and me, Mr. Mayor. Anyway, let's get on to this. I, myself, am in favor of, okay, you need an interim person for the airport, I think that's a good idea. But I do think, in the long run, that the third option would be great for it, to go back to staff. I do feel that a private citizen, appointment of a private citizen, would avoid the legal problems and intrigues and whatever that have been going on regarding the appointment to the airport. I feel it would be a much safer way to do it, shall I say? Now, how much does it cost the city for us to belong to this tri-city commission, airport commission? And number two, how much do we, does the city benefit from that? I'd like to know that. What do we really benefit from it? It would be very interesting to have that. And I think there has to be a lot of private citizens out there who would be interested in this job. I personally know people that are qualified and would be maybe very happy to serve their city, being on that airport commission. We all do, our thing is volunteers, you guys are volunteers, and, you know, what the heck? We have to look on volunteers as being part of the jewels of our city. We have a lot of volunteers in Glendale that keep our city growing and man it and do a lot of things that would cost many millions of dollars for the hours that are put in by community members over the years, and day and night that do the jobs that otherwise would possibly not get done. So we do have to look that private citizens are capable and are quite happy to serve on some of the commissions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Margaret. Next speaker is Barry Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, staff, and of course, the public. I'm Barry Allen. I, I think that the, the idea of having a member of the public go to the, be appointed to the airport commission is an excellent job. I think that the five council members have a full plate. They don't have the time and the resources to be able to go on four junkets a year and go to Hawaii next month and several other places. And I, Mr. Najarian, I really appreciate your asking me about it, but I just don't like Hawaii. So, but the other places aren't too bad. But I think that we really, it deserves to go to someone else. We have, we have a police lieutenant on now, we have a former member of this auspicious body, and a broadcaster right now, and I'm quite certain that we can find someone who is knowledgeable of airport construction, logistics, security, customer service, and operations of an airport, to be able to come forward and be available. And I'd really like to see this, this body go out and advertise for such a person to be an airport commissioner. And I think that really, you all are just so busy, and we don't wanna, we don't wanna tax you any further, because who knows what could happen? We might, and by the way, one of the things that I really enjoyed, and it might have been a little bit long, I have to agree with you on that, Mr. Quintero, but Mr. Yusefian, when he did come back from meetings, did share a lot with the public, so we knew what he was doing. When he was in St. Louis, we knew why he was there. We got reports, he wasn't just sitting there, I don't know what you can do in St. Louis, but maybe in Hawaii with the drink with the little umbrella, he'd just be a happy guy with that. Think of that smile. How could you miss? Yeah, there you go. And I think we, we need to be serious and look at the members of the public that are available, and not let the victor get the spoils. Thank you.
I have one more card. We'd like to address that.
Oh, I just have a question. So I'm sorry, Councilman Yusefian, in light of the people who spoke last week suggesting that we reappoint you, I guess, Mr. Mangasarian and Mr. Allen both now have said that they would not want you because you are a sitting council member, so I guess that knocks that in the head.
The next speaker is Lenore Solis.
Good evening, gentlemen. You know, I think Margaret just said, well, what benefit does our city derive from that airport? And we all know it's an absolutely important benefit. And, I mean, we are a destination for hotel, that's why we're building so many hotel rooms, because the Burbank Airport, the Glendale-Burbank-Pacadena Airport is such an important asset in this area. I mean, it's really a hub of activity, and I think it is very important that we select someone, I agree that it might be better if we just select somebody who's not on the city council. I remember that I, when I was on the Water and Power Commission, there was a fellow commissioner, Mr. Gregorian, who not only is a licensed contractor, but he's also a licensed pilot, and a very intelligent man, and really makes an effort to, to consider all avenues when making a decision. So I'm sure there are a lot of individuals like him who possess the knowledge, skills, and abilities that we would desire in somebody who would represent our city. I think it is a very important post, similar to the post that we have with the Metropolitan Water District. You know, we know water is our oil, and I think that, you know, we have an individual that. our oil, and I think that, you know, we have an individual there that is not on the council, and that is an unbelievably important position. And I think Mr. Rez does a fantastic job. Of course, he was a previous city manager, so he gets it when it comes to the intricacies. But I think that this is such an important post. I think, you know, the airport really makes Glendale a destination city for hotels, which means, you know, restaurants, and, I mean, and once the Americana comes in, that's going to be an even more important factor for people choosing where they're going to stay. So, I just think it's really important that we make a very wise and well-thought-out decision, and let's try to put our egos and our testosterone aside, and let's try to focus on what is in the best interest for everyone. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Lenore. Okay, that is the last card I have on the item. Mr. Yusefian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of answers to Margaret's issue as whether or not the airport has some economic. We did not pay anything. We do not pay anything. Originally, when the airport authority was put together, this city guaranteed a $60 million loan. That's all we did. We were the guarantor, which the airport authority later on paid all of those out. Currently, as a person who was on the environmental board, and legal environmental board, we did ask that particular question. I think the last time there was an economic study done, whether, what the impact of the airport is to the three cities, was when Carl Roggio was on the airport, and that tells you how far back that goes. So, we did go ahead and hire the consultant. It cost the airport approximately $100,000, and they have just gotten the draft. I actually got the draft on my last day. Nevertheless, it is only a draft, so I will not be sharing it with anyone, even though I'm not a commissioner seal there, but I will keep that bond, and I will not share that. Airport will do their final due diligence on that report, and that will be publicized. And from what I have seen, I think you will be very surprised what an airport does, and why you have DreamWorks here, why you have Disney here, why you have certain banks in here, and part of the reason is, is the airport. And a lot of jobs because of the airport. So, that's where that goes. As far as what my colleagues would like to do with the commission on a temporary basis, I do not have a problem with Mr. Starbird. I think he has been there, done that, and he knows how to do this. Although, I have a different knack on this. You know, some people think that sometimes I get to be a little bit rambunctious, but there is one thing about me, I am not vindictive. I know that some of my colleague, one of the reasons we started with this whole process of putting council members on the airport authority, the original purpose of that was to make sure that the council members are aware of the issues about the airport. Because when we did not have people there, I can guarantee there weren't a lot of people, well, with the exception of Mr. Weaver, who had learned a little bit about it earlier on, there wasn't a lot of in-depth understanding of what the challenges are in the airport, how significant it is, what is a 161 study, what is a 150 study, what are all the intricacies of the airport. And we are one-third owner. So, consequently, I think that was the reason we put two council members there. At the time when we did this, the promise was made to the other council members, when we were done with serving our term, we would allow the others the same opportunity. And I like to keep on to that particular promise. You know, whatever has happened, has happened. It's water under the bridge. I served my time, I resigned, I walked out. Nevertheless, there is a position open there, and I think, in my opinion, it should be filled by a council member who has not had an opportunity to be there. And at this point, there is three of them. And, you know, I know our mayor has his hands full with the MTA, and I don't know if Mr. Draymond would like to go, but either Mr. Draymond or Mr. Quintero, and since Mr. Quintero was here, I would have no problem either one of them going and serving for another year and a half. I will say, no matter who you put there, and I don't care if it's Mr. Gregorian, which I think is a great guy, or anybody else, you will not get the in-depth knowledge of how important the airport is to the city unless you have an opportunity to be there. And you know how people make a big thing about all these little junkets? I'll tell you, going to Hawaii in January, not a great thing. Very windy, and many times it rains, and by the time the plane gets there, you are ready to throw up, and by the time plane gets back, you're scared to death. So, it's not that great of a thing. But nevertheless, I think it's up to each councilman to make the most of it, or any commissioner, and I've tried to make most of it. And in my opinion, I've done a good job. Nevertheless, I think the opportunity has come for one of my colleagues to do that. If they do not wish to do that, I have no problem, but I'll be more than happy to second a nomination, make a nomination, and vote for a nomination, because that's what we said, that was the purpose. We changed an ordinance because of that. Let's not forget what we did. We changed an ordinance. We had an ordinance that did not allow council members to be on a commission. We changed it for a purpose, and the purpose was a good one. Doesn't matter what happened in the past. Let's not forget what the purpose was. The purpose was to educate the council members. I'm educated, Mr. Weaver's educated, we both know more about the airport than we did before we walked in. And I think the rest of my colleagues should have the same opportunity. That's what I think. So, I don't know what you guys want to do, but I'm comfortable with both of them, any of them that would like to go there. I have no problem with it. I think it's a good idea.
Mr. Quintero.
Well, I find it funny, because as time goes on, people forget what the situation was like at the Burbank-Pacadena-Glendale, or Burbank-Glendale-Pacadena Airport. Right, the Bob Hope, let's call it the Bob Hope Airport. The trend in the city, almost from the very beginning, I've been around since the '70s, was to appoint ex-mayors. And during the period when ex-mayors served at the airport authority, it was unbelievable what this city did to the residents of Burbank, the arrogance of our airport commissioners. And people forget. People, I mean, that's ancient history. No one remembers that, but I sure do. I remember the lawsuits, the condescending approaches to very real issues for those neighbors that lived around that airport, because that airport was originally a Lockheed Aircraft Airport that was converted, when the three cities bought it, converted to a commercial enterprise, and in came big jets and non-stop landings and so forth. So, anyway, in my opinion, back in the '70s and '80s, and I was a member of the Glendale Chamber of Commerce and eventually became the president, I remember thinking to myself, my God, we have all of these ties to the city of Burbank. We do all kinds of different municipal things together. Currently, we even own helicopters together. And yet, our commissioners, time after time, rub the nose of the Burbank residents as it pertained to airport issues. It was a disaster, the lawsuits and everything else. It was not fair. So, when I ran the first time, I talked about those issues. Also, at the time, there was the idea that we were going to extend the runway, which would have been a dagger pointing into the northwest neighborhood and the Rancho neighborhood of Glendale. But at any rate, it was my idea, the very first night I was elected, I talked about it, to put sitting city council members on the Burbank, on the Bob Hope Airport, just like Pasadena has always done. Pasadena's always had city council members sitting on the airport, and that's what this city finally did. In the meantime, all kinds of issues have taken place and so forth. There is no question about it. It hasn't been a smooth process. But ultimately, the elected officials need to sit on that airport, and they can be judged at election time, and that, to me, is the best way to go. But at any rate, I think this is the best bet. I don't think we need to do that in the next few months. Mr. Starbird can certainly do a good job. He's done it in the past, and then we'll take it from there, and we'll see what happens in January. But I just feel, you know, like I say, it's kind of, you know, ancient history, but it's really not, and it's still an open sore for those Burbank residents after all the years of getting kicked around by, they called it the Pasadena-Glendale grip. It was basically Pasadena council members and the ex-mayors of the city of Glendale. And I don't even, you know, well, I might as well talk about that, too, the abuses that took place, straight-out abuses of ex-mayors sitting on that commission, sitting on that board, and taking wives on vacations, et cetera, et cetera. Check with Will Rogers, he's got it well, he's got it well documented, everything that took place. So, those days are gone, and I don't think they need to come back.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Weaver.
May I move 8D2 with Mr. Starbird, to serve as, changing the motion until such time as his council appoints a person to complete the full term.
Probably recrafting it consistent with the language in JPA would be to modify the motion to reflect that under 8D2, that James Starbird is hereby selected and appointed to the Burbank-Glendale-Pacadena Airport Authority to serve on an interim basis, the unexpired term created by the resignation of Bob Yusefian. The next line should be deleted because it's not a permanent appointment to run to May 09, at least I believe Mr. Starbird probably hopes so. And I don't know if you want it effective immediately or if you had a date in mind. If it's effective immediately, we'll just know it's effective immediately.
An election to take place.
Do you accept the nomination, Mr. Starbird?
Because on December 3rd, you have an election.
Do you accept the nomination?
I serve at the pleasure of the city council.
That's a yes.
That's a yes.
Okay, so there's a motion for you to send me, that's where I'll go. Okay, so for 8D2 with the, reflecting the language by Mr. Howard, roll call, please.
Councilmember Draymond.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Yusefian.
Aye.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. I think we need to direct staff at this point with the procedures and what we want them to do in terms of applications and nominations for the permanent position. Do you have any suggestions, Mr. Howard?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, as I noted before, I did provide you with copies of the motions for the recruitment and selection of candidates for appointment to the airport authority in 1999. If you feel, after looking at those, that those are, would be appropriate for the recruitment and/or selection, you may feel one is more appropriate than the other. Certainly, we can bring you back at the appropriate time, whether it's 30 days, 45, 60 days, whatever the time period the council directs. Or, if you direct us to start the process now for the recruitment, we can, as we note in the motion at, as the exhibit from July 20th, 1999, we can ask the city clerk to begin to advertise, widely disseminate the opening of the position and advertise. If you note in the, again, in the exhibit, we have four qualifications laid out. It's really open to the majority of the council to determine if those qualifications fit within the framework of the type of individual or within the qualifications of an individual you'd like to see in the airport authority, or different qualifications. So, it's kind of really a clean slate right now for you to, this is just an example of what we used in the past, and I was here at that point in time. I think it was pretty effective. It was very open, very transparent.
You know, I have a question, Mr. Howard. Did we use this procedure when we appointed former councilmember Menuchyan?
No, sir.
No, we didn't, did we? It wasn't a very open process or anything else, was it? He was just plain appointed.
Correct.
That was it. No one else need apply.
It was provided as an option to the council, but the council chose another option.
Mr. Mayor.
It was provided as an option.
If you look at the motions, you'll see I was the only one here at the time, and I did apply, and I stood out here just like anybody else. That's when Mr. Provilitis was appointed, I believe. So, there's nothing wrong with the process that was used if we're going to go that way. Council members can apply, and so can anybody else.
Mr. Howard, do we have any FPPC issues? Let's say we were to decide that only councilmen could apply. I mean, that's sort of...
Well, that sort of goes down the road of appointing only a councilmember, and as pointed out by both my written opinion and the FPPC's advice letter, that councilmembers who are nominated or who express a strong interest would have to disqualify themselves.
Yeah.
And they have to essentially leave the room.
I would, could not participate. I mean, my position on it is that Mr. Quintero's points are well-taken, that it's important to have a representative, elected representative serving on there. But, on the other hand, I think it would behoove us to make this as open as possible and give everyone at least a shot at presenting their qualifications and their abilities to the council for appointment.
Are you comfortable with?
You're referencing the '99. Mr. Yusefian.
Issue of timing, Mr. Mayor. I just want to inform all of my colleagues and also Mr. Starbird to be ready for launching of the 161 study. It will be a hearing that will be held, public hearing, so whoever ends up to be our commissioner will probably have to sit through the whole 161 study. So, whoever goes there has to get himself educated very quickly, learn all the legal ramifications of all that, and also, there may be different individuals, because I was also in the process of negotiating a 15-year lease with TBI, which basically is all the workers that work for the airport, so that person will also do that. My suggestion will be is if we're going to put Mr. Starbird there, to keep him there until such time as the first hearing is taken place at least, so you don't have a new person walk in fresh and all of a sudden, he's got a deal with 800 people.
That's just my humble opinion. If, if, because I will apply. And if I do get on, I clearly know the Part 161. I've known it for years.
Okay, no campaigning yet, Mr.?
No, no, but I'm just saying.
There may not be any permitted at all.
It's not necessarily a new person. Get somebody on that doesn't know, and there could be others in the community that have read it and digested the Part 151.
But I think the point is the timing, that when we pick the permanent, that they're going to immediately enter the 161 hearing.
And that's why I'm saying, if we're going to put Mr. Starbird there, because he's familiar with all those issues, he's gone through that. At least have him there until that hearing is done. So, whoever goes after that, then we don't have any issues. That's a very sensitive issue.
When would we expect that?
It is ready to be launched as a first of the year. It is going out, first of the year. It's a big hearing, we have to do it by law. FAA is expecting all of that stuff. So, there's a lot of legal stuff. I can't talk about it here because it was all closed-session stuff, but I think it's important for Mr. Starbird to...
So, in terms of the time, Mr. Yusefian, what, is there a date where you think the appointment would be more appropriate for the permanent?
My recommendation will be, at this point, not to put a date for the second one. Allow Mr. Starbird to go to his first meeting, which is probably next Monday. He will go to next Monday, he will talk to Dios, and they will...
Report back to us.
They will, he will let us know when is the appropriate time, because then he can, he can get, he will be privy to that closed-session information. I do not want to reveal those information.
Okay.
Let him get it.
Excuse me, Mr. Draymond.
Did I just hear my colleague say that he was going to be speaking to Dios?
No, he is.
No, Mr. Starbird.
I assume you mean authority member, Dios, rather than executive director, rather than Dios in the larger sense.
No, Dios Moreira, you know.
So, you got the direction?
Okay, so, suggestion is that we begin the recruitment process. You've got the exhibit on 6E1. If I hear consensus that, whether it's qualifications and the recruitment and...
For two weeks. At least the qualifications recruitment on 6E1, 6B1, which was, again, a different meeting, lays out the selection process. I don't know if you want to get to that point yet. Maybe you just want to provide direction on the qualifications and recruitment.
You voted against this, Mr. Weaver.
Yeah, because I didn't agree with going public. I thought they ought to appoint a council member. And that's what we did ultimately in 2005.
Okay. So, we would follow this process with a report back from Mr. Starbird as to when the best time to make the change of, changing of the guard at the airport with relation to the 161 hearing?
You got direction now?
Yeah, if, well, I hear from two councilmembers that they want to follow the process.
You're clear with the proposal.
The proposal would be to follow at least the qualifications and recruitment under the six, the exhibit, which is lettered 6E1. Follow that proposal for the recruitment. I haven't heard anything about the selection, and maybe you want to put that on hold until after you hear from Mr. Starbird about how you're going to handle the interviews and the like.
I think that would be an appropriate thing. And, Mr. Mayor, I just want to let you know that I probably will not be going to vote for that. I still believe strongly a council member should be there. I think it's very important to...
I think you definitely... I think you definitely can maintain that position, but all this is doing is opening it up to other applicants. You can, I mean, when you judge the applicants or weigh their qualifications, you're entitled to give as much weight as you want to to any...
And that's what I think.
Anyone.
All right, that's fine.
But I don't want to say we're, you know, we're excluding anyone from applying.
As long as I'm hearing from a majority or more of the council, that they're comfortable with the qualifications.
No, I'm not okay with that at all. No, not at all. And once again, I asked a question, Rafi Manukian was appointed, how long ago, six months ago?
It was in April.
Right after.
It was in April. Was it open to the public? Did people apply? No, not at all. He was voted off the city council, and all of a sudden, he was appointed.
Right, that's right.
So where was the openness six months ago? Now we're looking for openness, we're looking for public input, there was none of the above six months ago, so I find that a little bit strange.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Mayor. I think there was a difference. I think with Rafi was, he was on the airport authority at the time.
Yeah?
So he was there for about a year. Yeah, he was.
He was a commissioner.
He was a commissioner. When Mr. Weaver stepped down to become mayor, Rafi Manukian replaced him, and he was on the council at the time, so it followed the same procedure. He was elected, and then when Rafi did not get elected, because he was an elected official who was appointed, at that point, he vacated his position.
Automatically.
Automatically, which caused us to do a reappointment of the existing commissioner who was serving. That's when we found out about all this stuff with the FPPC and everything else on that. That's what happened. Now, maybe, Mr. Quintero may have a point that, gee, he was no longer a council member, and maybe we should have followed that. But unfortunately, he was not able to make those arguments, since the FPPC did not allow that, and I think the city attorney actually made a slight error of not allowing him to speak from the dais, which he should have allowed that. And that's one thing you made a mea culpa about on the FPPC regulation, so he could have at least gone on there and spoke as an individual, deal with his First Amendment issue.
Now, to deal with his personal interests, yes.
Right, right.
Yes.
And that's why, since he was not in the room, that didn't happen, and Mr. Manukian was reappointed. And that's what happened. But nevertheless, listen, the world doesn't end. In my opinion, we have this opportunity, if you guys want to open it, open it, but I just want to be very honest about this.
You know, I don't want people to think that I'm going to vote for anyone.
I'm being very honest. I hate to say, gee, yeah, you have a chance, but you know what, I'm not. I'm going to be honest about it. I've been honest with public for a long time, and I will continue to do that. I am going to be biased. I am going to stick with our previous rules, which is, we change an ordinance to allow a councilman to be on the airport authority. I'm going to stick by that. So the rest of you, whatever you want to do, that's fine, but in the end, I'm going to look at at least two or three of my colleagues, or whoever, any of my colleagues who would like to do, and that's where my vote's going to go, so...
Well, let's, you know, let's address that issue. The issue is, do we want to open it to the members of the public, or exclusively to councilmen? Why doesn't someone make a motion, and let's, I don't know where the votes are.
I, I'd like to make a motion.
How can we sit here, it's kind of amusing, file this under Hearing 161, that's the secret wing at Bellevue, apparently, I don't know. It's getting so ridiculous. How can we sit here and talk about, well, we'll limit it only to existing council members when we have two representatives of the airport commission serving right now, and we're not. It's sort of a, kind of a silly argument to be debating right now. I'll just express my opinion and go back to nodding in the background here, and that is that we, I believe we should go ahead and make the interim appointment, and then, following that, at a set time and date, we open it to the public, and then hear from all the candidates and vote. And we may vote, and we may vote for an existing council member, we may not.
Fine with me, I competed before, and I'll compete again.
Okay, did we do the interim appointment?
We did.
Okay, so that's off the table. Why doesn't someone make a motion? I think we're very close on this, whether we're going to permit councilmen or not, or open to the general public.
Can you structure a motion?
Well, again, from what I'm hearing from the majority, and certainly I can stand corrected, is we can, we would use the same process under 6E1, which would be all-inclusive, council members, non-council members. I haven't heard anyone indicate that the qualifications that were outlined in that are anything different than what one would like to see, they're fairly inclusive. Likewise, the recruitment process, which will be widely disseminated and advertised, and then the selection process will hold to another meeting.
Let me ask you a question. I mean, when Mr. Weaver applied in those days, and stood over there and spoke, the FPPC rule was not in effect.
That's correct.
Now we got this whole new rule, okay? Now, question is, is the same FPPC rule is going to come back and haunt him, and say, you can't be even over there and speak?
It's going to create a crimp on the ability to, if you will, campaign or lobby for the position.
Oh, what do you think he's going to be doing there? He's going to stand over there and ask us, please vote for me, because I'm qualified, and if that ain't lobbying, I don't know what it is. That's the problem with this whole FPPC rule.
In my view, it would be an issue. I would agree with you, that in fact, because the FPPC allows you to leave the dais and speak on your own personal interests. Those personal interests they give examples of, but it says states, I'm quoting, including but not limited to. So, but the examples they give are, if it affects your own personal residence, if it affects a business of which you are the sole or even up to a majority owner of the business, it really isn't intended to allow someone to leave the dais and lobby for appointment to the position. And that would be my opinion, based upon that regulation and the FPPC opinions that I've seen, that it doesn't give you the ability to go that far.
And that's the problem with this whole process of opening it up to the public, because what will happen is the same thing that happened a couple, six months ago, which will say, these two gentlemen, if you want, or three gentlemen, or whoever, how many gentlemen, listen, at least I will be sitting here, because I ain't going back there. They will not be able to do anything. And so this is my problem with this whole thing. It would be much cleaner for us to wait for him to go through, find out when it's going to be done, and when that happens, I think we should just see if we can appoint somebody from the dais, and if we can't, then we go out. We can't vote for somebody.
Someone make a motion to limit the nominees to existing...
Go move, man.
Oh, he moved it.
Is there a second?
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay. I think we've had a lot of discussion, this is limiting the permanent airport employee for this particular spot to an existing councilman or elected official.
City councilman.
City councilman.
By the way, Pasadena has two seated councilmen.
One.
One who is not.
Okay, let's take...
Wait, one now?
Joyce, take a roll call on that item. Elected councilman only, need apply.
Okay, and...
Roll call. And can councilmen vote on that?
No, we can't lobby. I know I can't talk to anybody about it, and I can't talk down there, but I can fill out an application, and that's clean.
See the city clerk.
If we're looking at just city council members, I'm not sure why there is a need to fill out any application.
No.
Certainly is, as Mr. Quintero noted, we know where he went to school. Former Councilman Manukian didn't fill out an application, I don't know of any other council member who's filled out an application.
I didn't. Let's take...
I'm not sure there's a need to fill out an application, but again, it's up to you. I don't have a horse in this race, and so I'm not advocating one.
Yeah, you don't want to, you don't want to serve, do you?
Well, let's take, no. Let's take roll call.
Absolutely not.
Councilmembers, Drayman.
No.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Eusefian.
Aye.
Mayor Nigeryn.
No.
So it's limited to city councilmen?
City councilmen.
What's next?
Mr. Starbird.
Well, as what may be the shortest interim commissioner on record, if it's limited to elected officials, the question becomes, what kind of timing do you want to now set up for that?
Well, that's...
For example, you do, well, you don't, you don't need to recruit people. I mean, we know that 161 isn't going to come until the first of the year. The question becomes, what's my role going to be there?
I still think your role is to be there as an interim board member, until the city council appoints someone on this dais, so until January, and have fun.
Well, bring it back when you can.
Hey, you're on.
Soon as you can, because it's not a big report.
Just let us know, we're expecting a report next week.
He's not looking forward to that meeting, so I know that's what it is.
It's like selecting the mayor or the...
Okay, that's very good, that is 8B. Next item. Is there any new business?
We do. Yes, yes. I move that the city manager is hereby authorized to submit to the County of Los Angeles a request to move the assessors panel number 5607-021-010 on the list of tax-defalted properties for purchase by the city of Glendale. Further, should it be required that the county or the properties not be redeemed by the owner or owners, the city managers are authorized to execute any and all documents necessary in preparing, in the preparations, excuse me, of securing title to the properties in the name of the city of Glendale.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Drayman.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Eusefian.
Aye.
Mayor Nigeryn.
Yes.
Next item. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Go move.
Second.
We're adjourned.[1702.47]